Good evening. I call this January 28, 2025 Meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to Order. I want to let you all know that council member Rabadi is expected in the next few minutes, and then we'll have all seven. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is "Connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services." Officer Jasmis Johnson is our Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. This evening, Councilmember Rao will be leading our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask that we bow our heads in prayer. Before I begin this invocation, though, I want to just ask that we pray for the family of Steve Botha, his wife Harlene. He was a dedicated Morrisville resident who gave much of his time to help our town move forward. He will be dearly missed. And to the family of the late Representative Joe John, whose selfless and dedicated service to North Carolina will never be forgotten. We pray for any family who has lost a loved one or is battling illness, and for our soldiers, wherever they may be. As we gather here today, let us take a moment to reflect on the enduring legacy of the late Reverend Dr. Mark Luther King Jr., whose life we celebrated last weekend. His work continued to inspire us to strive for justice, equity, and unity. Dr. King taught us that the arc of the moral universe bends towards justice, but only if we commit ourselves to bending it. His dream of a world where all people are judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character remains as relevant today as it was decades ago. Let us honor his vision by rededicating ourselves to the principles he held dear: love, peace, and unwavering faith in the power of community. May as we, as leaders and citizens, strive to uplift one another, to listen with empathy, and to work collaboratively to create a future where equality is not just a dream, but a reality for all. Like Mahatma Gandhi, whose statue we admire now at Church Street Park Southern Lot, Dr. King reminded all of us that all of us can change the world and make our communities better if we live our lives with purpose and conviction. Let us embrace this call to service. Let this meeting be guided by a commitment to fairness and the greater good, ensuring that our decisions today reflect the values of compassion and inclusion that he championed. May we leave here... Let me end this prayer with the inspiring words from Dr. King. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? We pray for a great meeting this evening. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All who are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council's policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to share at this time? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve and second this evening's regular agenda.
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
If I could, I need to add... Ask to add a closed session for a personnel matter, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda with the addition of an additional closed session for a personnel matter.
I make the motion to adopt this evening's agenda with that change of adding a closed session.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Mayor Protem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero. There is one item on this evening's consent agenda. That's approval of Advisory Committee Chair/Vice Chair appointments. Would any member of the council wish to pull this item for discussion? Or is there a motion in second to adopt the consent agenda? May I entertain a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Mayor Protem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously six-zero. We are now at administrative reports, which are provided for information only. Does council have specific questions regarding the FY '25 mid-year quarter-two budget financial administrative report? Okay. Moving on, we have three presentations this evening. At this time, Councilmember Johnson will read the Proclamation Recognizing Human Trafficking Month.
Okay, thank you. As Mayor said, it's Proclamation Recognizing Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas human trafficking is the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude. And whereas North Carolina consistently ranks in the top 10 for the number of human trafficking cases reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and it is the fastest-growing criminal enterprise in the world, now generating $236 billion in illegal profits each year. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services 2025 theme for Human Trafficking Prevention Month is "Connecting the Dots." This theme highlights a holistic approach to human trafficking prevention, recognizing the intersection with other forms of violence and social issues. And whereas although human trafficking has been documented to affect individuals of all genders and socio-economic statuses, women, girls, and economically disadvantaged individuals are disproportionately trafficked. Human trafficking survivors often go undetected and unserved, experiencing extremely high levels of trauma, and the number of restoration opportunities for survivors in North Carolina is not enough to serve the number of survivors. And whereas connecting the dots between human trafficking, online harassment, and abuse, interpersonal violence, and other forms of violence, communities can disrupt multiple forms of exploitation. Understanding the role of economic mobility, desires for connection, technology, and market dynamics can prevent some of the most predictable recruitment schemes into human trafficking. Now, therefore, the Town Council, the Town of Morrisville, does hereby recognize January 2025 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. By building healthy relationships and strengthening the resilience of our community and area industries, we can protect against vulnerabilities to human trafficking. And so, I think we're going to ask Police Chief Acosta to come forward, and we have two representatives from S.H.I.E.L.D., North Carolina, that I am so happy are here to also receive the proclamation. If you all can come forward. Yes, please, come right up here. Please, yes, 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 yes. So we're going to hand you this proclamation, and I want to thank you all so very much for all you do in this world of human trafficking, and I'm very grateful for all you do. And I'm going to give you an opportunity to chat, too, but I think we're going to do a picture first, so, yep. And please take... Yep, thank you. Thank you, Bianca.
Good evening, members of Morrisville Town Council and distinguished guests. It is a privilege and honor to be with you this evening. My name is Karen Matthews, and I serve on the Board of S.H.I.E.L.D., North Carolina, as a survivor advocate and liaison. As the Town Council just declared, January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I'm going to take the next three minutes to explain what human trafficking is, because there is a lot of misnomers surrounding it. The media often portrays human trafficking as individuals being abducted or kidnapped. However, only 4% to 6% of victims enter into trafficking that way. Hence, if we continue focusing on scenarios like that, we run the risk of missing 90% of the cases. Instead, it's important to know that most human trafficking victims know and trust their trafficker. They go through a process called grooming, and the trafficker can be a trusted adult, boyfriend or girlfriend, a peer. boyfriend, or girlfriend, a peer, someone who lures the men. Forty percent of trafficking victims are exploited by a family member. One of the survivors I worked with was sold into trafficking at the age of six, and because it was a family member, no one thought to question the situation at all. North Carolina ranks number nine in the nation for the human trafficking cases that are reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Unfortunately, human trafficking is happening all around us, but there's something we can do. The first step is to get educated, and we can do that through... Shield North Carolina offers a virtual training every month. We've reduced the training to just one hour, and it literally takes just a small amount of time, and it's convenient to everyone. We have flyers in the back, so please feel free to grab one of those. The other is that is if you see something that seems off, please don't be afraid to say something to your law enforcement or to call the National Trafficking Hotline. One of the things that all of the survivors have collectively said is that people witnessed things, and they remained silent. They said people just saw things, but they didn't want to get involved. But your willingness to get involved and speak could change the trajectory of someone's life forever. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you, Morrisville Town Council, for making this proclamation.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
At this time, we invite Town Manager Brandon Zutima and Deputy Town Manager Giselle Rodriguez forward to recognize the retirement of Fire Chief Nate Lesinski.
Let me get that on. That'll make it a little better, not a lot better. Bear with me, this is what I've got for tonight. We are here tonight to recognize our retiring Fire Chief Nathan Lesinski, and there are so many things that I would like to say. I don't want to steal thunder from everyone, but Nate has been with the Fire Department and with the town for seventeen years, has come to a situation where he's had to make a decision to leave the Fire Department. Not an easy decision, but want to celebrate the amazing person that he is and the amazing work he has done for this community and for the Fire Department the past seventeen years. You know, Nate has served in essentially every position in the Fire Department, starting out as a brand-new, I heard earlier, new-nothing fireman, and has escalated all the way up to Fire Chief. I got to know Nate when I arrived in late 2019. He was the Assistant Fire Chief, and then was subsequently promoted to Deputy Fire Chief, and then through a very unique discussion and arrangement, he was elevated to Fire Chief two years ago. And in the time that I've had a chance to work with him, I've seen the care he has for the Fire Department and the Fire Staff. I've seen the care he has for this community, and I've also seen the care he has for virtually anyone else that works here or is involved with the community. A tremendous Fire Chief has done a lot in terms of evolving the department and continuing the good work of other chiefs before him. Has an amazing level of knowledge about fire, but also has an amazing knowledge in so many other areas. I think it's a bachelor's, two masters, Chief Fire Officer, and it goes on and on. And so, you know, he has been the leader that the Fire Department, I believe, needed and wanted the past two years, did a tremendous amount of work with and in support of Chief Criddle during his time as our Fire Chief. And, you know, what I have found in my opportunity to work with him is he was a tremendous asset. She's here, I think I can speak for a little bit to Martha as the Town Manager, and certainly to me as the Town Manager, because of his knowledge and because of his willingness to do whatever was asked of him. I mentioned earlier during the Fire Department session that when I got here, I thought during my career, I'd always had a pretty decent, pretty good, solid work ethic. And then I met Nate and immediately felt belittled, because I'm not sure who keeps up with Nate in the context of work ethic and wanting to get things done. So I'm very professionally appreciative for Nate. I'm personally appreciative for Nate. And I'm also pleased to share, council is aware of this, but for those in attendance and for those watching, Nate is going to rejoin the town as an employee on Monday in a part-time role, working out of the manager's office as an assistant to the Town Manager, so we're not letting him go. We're going to keep him in the family, we're going to keep him on the team, and going to work him only half to death. We used to work him to death, but he's going to be part-time, so I can only work him half to death. But really excited about having him on the team still, again, to do a lot of good work for us. So Nate, thank you seem so completely in just not where it should be, but looking forward to keeping you here and working with you, and thank you for everything you've done.
As Brandon shared, Nate has an extensive bio. We can probably stay here for a while, just sharing with you all of the achievements that he has, all the different degrees that he has been able to pursue. He has been a lifelong learner. In fact, this week, I texted him to see how he was doing, and he said, "Well, I am here teaching myself how to program computers," because he doesn't know what to do with his time, because he's always one to continue to learn. Hopefully, we can keep him busy starting next Monday, and he won't have to learn how to program a computer, but we'll see about that. But he's always been one that has been very interested in continuing to expand not only his knowledge, but also help his people grow and help his people achieve greater opportunities for them to better themselves. Brandon mentioned he was hired seventeen years ago, in 2007. He was, in fact, one of the first three firefighters that the town sent to a fire academy in Durham, right? So, and it's amazing to see how Nate was sent back, was sent to that fire academy, and from that moment, he just took off and pretty much just went through all of the ranks in the Fire Department to now make the greatest impression he has as a Fire Chief. He has clearly taken our department to greater heights. He has clearly secured a high level of respect in the fire service for Morrisville, and there are many accolades to speak about that. And we spoke some about that this afternoon in the retirement ceremony. So, and we shared a sensitive remark this afternoon, so we're not going to bore you with repeating a lot of that. But Nate has clearly demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the fire service. He has demonstrated a deep compassion for those that we serve, to our community, a high level of integrity on every task that he took on, a great pride for the high level of excellence that is achieved by the department, and a high level of dedication and professionalism to all around him. Nate has something very unique about him, and that is, every time you approach him in a task, it doesn't matter if that meant he now had to work twenty-five hours in the day to catch up with his backlog and his full plate, he made you feel as if that was the most important task at the moment, as if you were the most important person for him right at that moment. And he always made everyone feel like he deserved his attention, because he always wanted to provide the best customer service. He not only did that for people in our community, but he did that with everyone that he encountered, even if it was someone from the crew, even if it was someone from the senior leadership team, or anyone from the organization. He always wanted to take care of people. He always said, "Yes, consider it done. We'll take care of it." He had a battalion of people behind him to help him through it, but he always led them in the right direction. He always had that can-do attitude that really is a great example for me to also continue to follow that as well. So Nate, you have helped us, helped all of us. You have made us all better. You have clearly made the department a lot better, is a better place and a better, much better place today than it was several years ago, and we are very grateful for your efforts. And with that, I'll keep it short, I will turn it over to Jeannie.
So Nate and I are kindred spirits when it comes to budget. Gosh, this is like hiding me from everybody. We're kindred spirits when it comes to budget. When you first came to the Town of Morrisville, it was pretty clear we were speaking the same language through spreadsheets and really making sense out of the numbers. And I'm super excited personally that I get to maybe use him, continue to use him forward in that way, so that we can be talking the same language. It's awesome. So you received a whole lot of really special recognition from your team today, and what the senior leadership team got together, and we wanted to do something that I think was focused forward, on what your future would look like, and it's called fitting into new boots. And so I need to... It's one of those, it's symbolic about the message that I believe the Town Manager, the Deputy Town Manager, the Assistant Town Manager, myself really feel about you. As we look ahead for you and what you can do with the organization and the future of filling and fitting these new boots. You might, you might. So bear with me. So in new boots, you can find both comfort and courage to conquer new things. These boots will strengthen your footing as you wade through new waters. To help you along as you transition your work-life vibe, a new uniform can really amplify a person's positive new life attitude. With your new boots. All right. So the next thing is cozy socks are little hugs for our feet that pair nicely with your new boots and your new uniform. Together, this ensemble creates that harmonious blend of both cheerfulness and preparedness as you step out into the new world of possibilities with meetings to have meetings. I love meetings about meetings. So it's going to be as if you're part of it, so everyone will explain it over and make room for you here. All right. So digging around for your next treasure in your fitting the new boots. So let your new nameplate serve as the beacon to all that know who you really are without a doubt, as the desk of a humble genius. For times when the waters of chaos run deep, the Chaos Coordinator sign is the perfect complimentary tool to keep everyone on their toes and let them know that you're still in control. So here is your Chaos Coordinator sign, and when the waters get too deep, please put up this wet sign. That's right, that's right, because you're waiting in new waters. Within a new life journey, one must balance the nourishment of both mind and body to ensure that you're ready to tackle these new challenges with enthusiasm and vigor. So you need to savor the food of life, and in here are a number of things that are going to help you along the way. You have cards for sushi is your favorite, right? And a book of that you're awesome. Among some other things, you've got some special toppings down here in the bottom. They're pretty great. But these are the things to feed your soul. All right. With everyone needs a little game time spirit, and here's to continuing to cheer for your team. Whether they're at the top or whether they're still fighting for their shot, a reminder to never give up. And when we find your new place in the office, you're going to have a nice little sign put up, okay? Everybody knows that you're pulling further to the ocean. In the end, as you fit into your new boots, embracing the nuances of change, remember you are equipped with resilience, ingenuity, and the heart to tackle any challenge that comes your way. Here's to stepping out into your new boots, your new boots, with confidence and embracing that journey ahead, as you know that you have the strength and support behind you to shine. And dig way down in here, and you've got this Iron Man. Nate is an Iron Man. We love you, Nate. This is from Brandon, Giselle, John, and myself. Get your food out of the way, so you can speak.
They actually are my size.
Yes, we're going to make sure.
Now I would like to present Nate. I would like to actually ask if council will be willing to come, so that we can take a picture. But I would like to present Nate with his retirement plaque from the Town of Morrisville, and he reads, "The Town of Morrisville presents to Nathan Lesinski in recognition of your retirement and seventeen years of servant leadership, from July 2007 to January 2025."
Well, so I... I think Chief Dooley's stealing my stuff. I'm not sure what's going on here. He definitely wants the Bills cup. Thank you very much. That was amazing. I... That was definitely a Jeannie senior leadership gift. That was pretty amazing. I've spoken a few times. I've... I still have a speech that I didn't use earlier that I probably can use now, but I really want to talk about two things, and bear with me. As you know, my mother, she owned a company, and two things about her that I always was fascinated with, her servant leadership and her responsibility to her employees. She had hundreds of people that worked for her. She had tons of managers. She had salespeople, but she used to drive around in this car, and this car just was like her car, and she had things in the back of it, just because if she was driving by someplace that somebody needed something, she wanted to be available to help them out. She didn't care what rank she was. She was the owner of the business. She didn't care. She also had a tremendous responsibility to her staff. Now, that responsibility came with a bit of a quid pro quo. I need you to work hard for me, but if you do that, I am going to absolutely provide you with the best living I can. Bringing it back to this conversation, I really want to talk to our elected officials and our senior leadership. I performed at a high level of servant leadership, because that's what I saw you all demonstrate to me. I also found that you guys had an enormous responsibility to your staff. For seventeen years, I've been able to provide my family, nobody's going to get rich in this position, with vacations. My kids have gone to college, cars, nothing that's going to be extravagant, but you provided me with a living, and I felt that responsibility that you all, every budget season, you went through, and you provided us with the best insurance. you provided us with the best insurance, the best pay, and you kind of balanced budget, taxes, what the community can afford. And I greatly appreciate the work that you all did in providing me with an outstanding living for seventeen years. Sure, people can go make more money in the private sector, but the town culture that you all provided to us is amazing, and I am extremely thankful for that. Every year, you really looked to your employees and said, "I have a responsibility to them to do the best that we possibly can." And I stuck around for that because I really felt that, that ownership you all had and that care. And I'm very, very thankful to the managers and especially you all, council, for providing that to us. I, I thank the community for that, you know, I spoke about this earlier where there's a lot of people not from here who come here and try and make here a better place. And I really wanted to contribute to that. I really felt like the residents, the, the, the community, the community groups that really try really hard to make this place a better place. The managers, every year you all provided us with the best you could. The staff here is absolutely amazing. I can go on and on about stories of staff members working hard behind the scenes with no pimp. You can look at our special events, July 3rd, there are people running around that place sweating, working as hard as they possibly can, nobody seeing what they're doing, but they just want to make our community better. You know, the fire department, I would put the Morrisville Fire Department up, now that Carrie's not here. I actually would say it in front of them unfortunately. I, I, I would put our fire department up against anybody. We are amazing, we are small but mighty. The grit, the perseverance, the resiliency our fire department has, there's, there's no way we can show up on a call with being sixty members and running calls to all these other organizations if they didn't trust us. And they absolutely trust us because you have an outstanding fire department. And that's a trickle-down effect from your leadership, your servant leadership, your, your ability to give us whatever we need that the community can afford. You do that really hard cost, you know, benefit analysis every year, and I'm extremely thankful for you all for the seventeen years that I've been here to provide that. So thank you very, very much for everything that you've done. My kids are thankful, my, you know, they're all, they, just, I can't tell you from an employee perspective how thankful I am. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think the council members would like to share a few thoughts. Who would like to begin? Liz, would you like to begin?
Sure, I can start. So first, I don't know if Chief Dooley is still here, you probably, oh, yes, so you go out, so I'm glad you're back. Thank you for organizing, and, and I know you didn't do it alone, I know it's a group effort. Thank you for organizing the event this afternoon to celebrate this phenomenal man, this extraordinary firefighter, this extraordinary leader. You all did a fabulous job, so thank you for that. At, at the, at the luncheon today, I said a couple of things about luck. You know, we use the word luck, we're lucky, we're lucky, we're lucky to have Nate here, we're lucky that, that Nate was Chief Lysinski of our Morrisville Fire Department, but none of that is luck. It, it comes down to really hard work. And Nate, you have poured your heart and soul into this position as we heard here tonight and we heard this afternoon. You, you poured your heart and soul into the Morrisville Fire Department, and you should be very proud of the last seventeen years and all you have done for this organization. And I totally agree with you, it is the best, and you've heard me say this before, the best fire department, hands down, I'll put you up against anybody. So, and that's because of you and this fabulous family. And you referred to today, today was wonderful because we heard so much, I heard things I had, had, well, of course, I know you all consider yourselves a family, that was not a surprise to me. But, you know, heard so many accolades from, from others and, and some of, you know, your fellow peers couldn't even speak because they got so choked up. So thank you. Usually I get choked up, and I will tell you, this is a happy retirement for me because, because Nate is coming back. So I don't, I don't have to totally say goodbye, but I can say thank you, congratulations on a job well done. Looking forward to have you working with us further in the organization because there's more work to be done. And as the manager said, you, your work ethic speaks for itself, and we know that you're up to the task as you were in your fire career. So thank you and thank your family again for, for their sacrifices as well. So appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pratam Garamela, followed by Councilmember Skarren Johnson, please.
I, I don't even know where to start, but one thing I'll say, this afternoon, I was just kind of comparing, there were more people today in the fire station than the day we went for ribbon cutting. And, and the claps and the resounding that was coming out shows, you know, so much you have done to the community. It is, it is like, I expected a lot of fire chiefs coming, but it's different. They come because officially they have to come, and they come because they want to see, you know, and be a part of it. And looking at all the speeches and stuff, you have touched everyone, you know, there's not a single person that you have not touched in the, in the departments, not just the fire department in Morrisville, but Bay County and also our staff, you know. It is kind of unfortunate that, you know, it is taking a downturn, but based on our conversations, you know, we had so many conversations when we were driving together to the fire commission meeting, and you wanted to eventually be working at the manager's office. That's, that's what, you know, you, you, we discussed about it. And I'm glad that at least in a part-time version that you're able to contribute. And the only reason I feel like there's some kind of thing going on, you're working only part-time because Brandon cannot handle you. You know, it's not about like, you know, this one, it's the other way around, I put it.
Mayor Pratam, I have to survive those twenty hours, so if you could-
I, I'm going to say like, you know, and I'll, I'll end, you know, I was hearing Giselle and everything that you want to keep that standard ninety-seven or ninety-nine, you know, those kind of things. And I'll end with a happy, you know, like a funny note. Nate and I were going to the fire commission meetings. Usually we leave around five, you know, try to grab a bite somewhere to eat and then go. We thought the meeting was six-thirty, so we planned accordingly. By the time we were pulling in, all the fire chiefs were leaving. And they had changed their time to six o'clock, and they had finished the meeting by then. And I can tell you that incident was so funny that she still gets, you know, called upon that. And, and I can understand why you take things, you know, to heart in a, in a good manner, and you want to create that ethics that the department has. And honestly, it is, we are, we are blessed to have you. And you're, you know, and the work that you'll be doing in a different role, I think, will just be fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well, you know, if the meeting only lasted twenty minutes that we missed, it must not have been that important. Or the two most important people that weren't, you know.
Councilmember Skarren Johnson, followed by Councilmember Ralph, please.
Well, Chief Lysinski, I'm very sorry I wasn't able to make the celebration at noon, but I definitely would have shared my admiration as I am right now. You are a true servant leader, and you inspire everyone you touch and talk to. I remember you coming up to me and you connected with me directly more than anyone I can recall. You said, "You're into family history." And I'm like, "Yeah, I kind of am." And, and you shared your family history and, and how you were, you know, your journey, and it just seemed so human. And that is just one example of how you connect with your staff, your team, you know, the extended, you know, communities. You make it personal, you motivate others, and you inspire them to reach higher than what they really had thought they could achieve. And that is why we're nationally accredited, you know, and remain nationally accredited because we're inspired to achieve more. And that's because of your really strong belief that we can be better and we can work together, and connections are everything. So I'm glad you're sticking around so you can keep pushing us even twenty hours. I don't know if I'm ready for that because it's a lot of energy coming our way. And, but I thank you so much for making me understand and appreciate what my role is and what I can do to be better. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Well, I just, you know, want to say that, excuse me, that we're so grateful for your, your bravery, your service, your leadership to the residents of Morrisville. You've made a safer place and done great jobs with our department. As I said this afternoon, and I'll say it again, I mean, I think what makes you really exceptional is the standard you show of excellence in all walks of your life. When you were a firefighter, you gave it your best to be the best firefighter. When you were a chief, you gave, you gave it your best to be our chief, a great chief, doing, doing great things with our department, a great husband when you're with your wife, and a great father, and a great son. And as a friend, you give undivided attention and love to all of us. I've always enjoyed our time together, and your jovial smile. I know after your mother passed away, we, we spent some moments, you and your wife and I, reminiscing about our West Virginia connections and stories about your mother. And it was emotional for me to listen to those stories, but it really made sense to me of the kind of man you are. If I could have gone back in time and met your mom, I would have told her what a wonderful son she raised. She must have been a remarkable woman. And I know she's watching over you and your father and your family, but on that note, I just want to thank you for your dedication, and you leave a legacy of excellence for this department, for the residents of Morrisville, but also for all of us. Because you truly, you've made me a better person, but I know my colleagues feel the same way, and anyone that you've touched in this department. So I'm glad you're not leaving. I did cry a little bit this morning when I ran, thinking that this is going to be your last day, but, you know, like, like Liz Johnson said, it's, it's a happy day because we know you're going to be here and doing great stuff. So wishing you all the best in this next phase, and I love you and looking forward to a bright future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robdy, please.
It's kind of tough to follow up all these other great comments, but I am very grateful to have known you. And I will say, when I first met you, you were very enthusiastic and happy and kind of like bouncing around, and, and I, at first I was like, who is this guy? This can't be real, you know? Is this really him? And, and, you know, over the past few years, getting to know you, I have come to realize that, and I'm very grateful for the way you are, that you are genuinely enthusiastic and have such a positive attitude. And that wears off on the people around you. And I really appreciate, well, I remember you, when you were giving us the tour around Fire Station Three before it opened, you were so happy and enthusiastic to show us all the different amenities and the rooms and the solar panels, and I was, and then you were very enthusiastic about having the beehives behind Fire Station Number Three, which I think is really cool. Recently, when I came by there, I had to go look at them. And I appreciate your willingness with the food waste receptacles as well. So I'm so grateful that you're still going to be around.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robdy, please.
So I know that most of the people in the room have known you way longer than I have, but I feel like once a guy carries you out of a Diwali celebration and into your house with ice bags on your feet, it kind of accelerates the kinship. And, you know, I, I remember, I, so everyone has said everything that I would have said, but I did just want to share a memory of that day because I was injured at a Diwali celebration and I, and I was scared, I was in pain, I was embarrassed, and I just was, I mean, I remember that I was being so mean to everybody because I was just like, just completely over the edge. And I remember that you, you know, you put your hand on my shoulder and you said, "Don't worry, this is going to be okay." And it was so weird because I actually felt, like I could actually feel myself calming down. And I think that, you know, I think that's just an example of the type of, the type of connection that you make, I've seen you make with people all the time in all types of situations. I think it's why you're such a good leader. I think it's why you're such a good friend. I think it's why you're such an asset to this town. And I am very, very grateful that you are not going anywhere because I honestly, I don't know what we'd do without you. So, yeah, so thank you very much. And I'm sorry that I couldn't be there today. I really tried to reschedule things like a mad woman, and I could not be there, but just know I was there in my heart.
Thank you.
And I'm grateful too, because you've been so much more than just a fire chief. You've been a leader, a mentor, and a friend to all of us, Nate. Over the years, you helped shape this department into one of the finest in the region, but what truly stands out about you, Nate, is your unwavering kindness and the way you make every person you meet feel seen and valued, as was shared by pretty much all our council members. On behalf of the town of Morrisville, thank you for your extraordinary service, your unwavering dedication and your kindness that has touched so many lives. You are and always will be a part of the Morrisville family. And I recall there was a live burn training on Morrisville Carpenter a little while back, and you had, you were just, you were going in gear with your son. And so it's so great that you're able to share that with your own family as well. Thank you for being part of our family for so many years. And I'm looking forward to Monday, and I expect you'll be wearing that shirt.
And boots.
And the boots. So let's all take a moment to celebrate a career and a person who has made Morrisville a better place for all of us. Please join me in giving our heartfelt thanks and applause to Chief Nate Lysinski.
Thank you. I, I, one last thing, Nate, you know, there's two things firefighters hate, change in the way that things are. You can't despise either one of them. There's a third, and I, real quick, I know you all have a lot of work to do. I did get a text message from allegedly the deputy town manager last night to tell me to chill and accept the praise that's coming my way, and I tried the hardest to do that. So there are three things firefighters hate, change the way that things are, and appreciation and thank you. They absolutely despise it because it's part of doing our job. Everything you just said is part of our doing job. Thank you very, very much.
Just wanted to make sure he had the last word. For our last presentation, we invite Planning Director Michelle Stiegel forward to facilitate the 2035 Wake Transit Plan update.
Is that better?
Is that better? Okay. Um, so, two, uh, two items were handed out to you this evening. Um, one included additional follow-up information from your work session two weeks ago. Um, probably most notable in that was some tax information. Um, and then you also have a draft public comment letter. We do anticipate that after you hear additional information tonight, that there will be revisions to that letter, but just to remind council, Phase Two Public Engagement for the Plan is currently underway, so this is the opportunity to weigh in on that if you so choose. Um, and we would be hoping to get that letter out to Campo within the next week, so if you could get comments back by Friday, that would be great. Um, but with that, I'd like to hand it over to Ben and welcome him back.
Thank you, Michelle. That's a familiar spot for you. A little bit. So, um, as Michelle mentioned, I'm now the, uh, I'm the Wake Transit Program Manager for Campo, so I oversee the Wake Transit Program, um, the lead agency responsibilities that Campo is in charge of, and one of those is the Wake Transit Plan Update. So, I'm here tonight to give you a little bit of an, um, update on where we're at so far with the plan update and where we're going to be going, um, over the next few months. Oh, there we go. Um, so again, uh, just a quick agenda. I'll provide an overview of the state of the plan that we worked on and took out to the public earlier, or last year during the late spring, early summer. Um, I'll also provide a little bit of, um, the market analysis that's been done, and again, focused on Morrisville. I believe you received the full market analysis as an attachment to your agenda. Um, and then review the planned development, public engagement that we've been going through this current Phase Two, provide an opportunity for council input and provide the next steps in the process. So, um, as you hopefully know, the Wake Transit Plan is a revenue stream for public transportation investment that voters approved in 2016, and the Wake Transit Plan actually started funding new transit service in August twenty seven and, August 2017. And, um, since that time, it's significantly expanded transit service throughout Wake County. Um, the Transit Plan itself is updated every four years, so this is the second update that we've gone through. Um, and the updates take into account community and stakeholder preferences and priorities, and look at financial and technical data about performance and outcomes. The Transit Plan is based on four big moves. Connect regionally, connect all Wake County communities, create frequent reliable urban mobility, and enhance access to transit. These are the four big moves that have been in place since the adoption of the original Wake Transit Plan, and there is, we are not proposing to change these four big moves. They continue to be, uh, the framework under which we, um, do everything related to Wake Transit. So, the Transit Plan revenues themselves have been consistently strong. We've, uh, the Transit Plan has raised nearly $750 million to date, um, and is expected to raise another $700 million to a billion dollars over the next 10 years out to about 2035. Um, those revenues include the half-cent sales tax, local sales tax, portions of, uh, two portions of vehicle rental tax, vehicle registration tax, um, and then some other tax revenue. And the question really that we've been asking the public is, what are your transit priorities over the next 10 years? Um, so you can see here, since 2017, over $200 million has been invested. Over 67.7 million of that has been invested in new service, and over 52 million has been invested in new vehicles. Um, $34.7 million has been developed in the, has been invested in the development of new bus rapid transit corridors. Um, we've spent approximately $21 million on capacity building and administration, $14 million on bus stops and stations, and $3.1 million on other countywide programs. We expect to spend $350 million over the next few years. Uh, major projects include New Bern Bus Rapid Transit design, finishing design and beginning construction of the Southern Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, finishing design of the Western Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, constructing the Go Raleigh, Go Wake Access ADA Maintenance Facility and Call Center, constructing the Cary Multimodal Center, and completing construction of the Russ Bus, which is the Raleigh Union Station Bus Facility. It's currently in, under construction in downtown Raleigh by Go Triangle. So, the market analysis, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but, um, the market analysis went through and looked at data from all the communities in, in Wake County, really focusing primarily on the suburban communities to look at where the, where the transit market is for those communities, looking at the growth. And as you all know, Wake County has had tremendous growth, especially in the western section of Wake County. And again, the market analysis bared that out. What you'll find in the market analysis is each community will have an overview page showing the existing transit service and talking about some of the, um, future transit services and, and other things that impact transit in the area. And then the next, you'll see, uh, key statistics for each community. Um, so, for Morrisville here, you have a population density of 4.72, which is over double the county population density. Um, you have an employment density of 5.05, which is almost five times the county employment density. And you have 2.3% zero-vehicle households, which is just under the county percentage at 4%. And your median household income is 114,075. These numbers are all based on, uh, census and, and North Carolina State Demographer numbers. See there, we provide a breakdown on race and ethnicity, race and ethnicity and age groups, and then look at the population growth for each community, as well as employment growth from 2016 to 2022. As you can see, um, for Morrisville, you had 32% population growth just since 2016, compared to Wake County of 13%, and your employment growth is 23% compared to Wake County at 8%. Finally, we worked with your local staff to, um, to make sure we were aware of development that has occurred and is occurring. Um, so we looked at development both by type and size, as well as by status and size, and used that to develop, um, more information on where transit needs will be occurring, um, over the next 10 years. So, next, I'm going to, um, go into our Phase Two Engagement that we've been working on since, um, early December. So, um, the engagement goals for this phase are, again, to share information on planned Wake Transit Plan rail investments between FY '26 and '35, discuss the concept of using Bus Rapid Transit Connect Raleigh and Durham, ask what projects people want to see completed first, and then share ongoing Wake Transit Plan projects and investments with this feedback shaping the direction for Wake Transit Plan's 10-year investment strategy. Um, and for the first point, for rail investments, we are, um, proposing to move away from commuter rail in this next 10-year Wake Transit Plan, primarily because feasibility studies show that commuter rail is too expensive and takes too long to implement. The current estimated cost of the commuter rail is somewhere north of $2 billion. Originally, when commuter rail was placed into the Transit Plan, the expectation was that federal funds would cover approximately 50% of the commuter rail cost, and based on information that's been received in the feasibility study, we do not believe that that 50% cost share is still feasible either. So, instead, um, what we want to do with the Wake Transit Plan is look at leveraging investments in regional rail to strengthen local connections, um, again, leaving open the possibility to revisit commuter rail in the future. Um, and again, one of the big things, which you'll see in a little bit later in some information, that we wanted to make sure the public was aware of, is we do have rail service here today. Um, we have, we have multiple Amtrak trips, Amtrak trips per day going through the region. Obviously, we could use more, there could be some more often service, but we do have some rail service today. Um, and there's some things that we think Wake Transit can invest in, um, both infrastructure and even potentially service to, um, maybe even improve that over time. Our engagement strategy included online, in-person, um, focus groups, and presentations. So, um, online, we've been pushing out social media things and email, and emails. Um, we've had banners on trip planning apps, we've put out posters and flyers. Hopefully, you've seen, um, some things on social media we've put out. We created, I believe it was three or four different social media reels that seem to be pretty popular and have driven some engagements. We're very pleased with that. We hosted, or participated in over 20 pop-ups throughout Wake County. Most of those were in December, we had a few of those in January. And then we also had six focus groups with target audiences. Um, and then the last piece is presentations, which I'm doing tonight. We're working with partners, um, to, to do presentations throughout the county where requested. For the engagement, just to, um, let you know where we've been and where we're going. So, um, we launched engagement in December, so the first couple of weeks of December, we really worked hard to get out to pop, to pop-up events. We participated in a lot of tree lighting ceremonies and other holiday events. Um, and, and also started holding some focus groups. We really took a break during the holiday season, um, primarily focusing on digital, um, engagement during that time. Again, pushing out social media, emails, and then, um, starting with January 6th through the end of this week, we again have, um, ramped up our activities with social media, have some more pop-ups. We've done, been doing presentations, um, sending out emails, and making adjustments or corrections as needed. So, going through some of the, um, elements of the Transit Plan that we're, um, focusing on and, and, and giving more information to the public during this engagement phase. One major element is Bus Rapid Transit, which, um, hopefully everyone is aware of. We currently have four corridors that are either under construction or planned, New Bern, Southern, Western, and Corridor. Those are all focused primarily around Raleigh, with the Southern Corridor going down to Garner and the Western Corridor going to, um, Cary. But then we also have two extensions that we, that are in the plan, that will continue to stay in the plan. The Western Extension, which would go from Cary through Morrisville up into RTP, and the Southern Extension, which would go from Garner down towards Clayton. Um, all four of these existing, the four, all four of the existing corridors, as well as these two extensions, are in the plan and will continue to remain in the plan. We also are, um, have, have, and will continue to invest in service frequency and span, making buses more convenient by operating service more often and for longer hours and days. Um, we define in the Wake Transit Plan frequent service as 15 minutes or better and span, and the span of service at least 17 hours a day. By 2030, we expect to have 14 bus routes, 14 frequent bus routes and 122 miles of frequent service. As of right now, we are already closing in on 100 miles of frequent service. Um, so we will probably exceed that goal, um, and we'll be updating that goal as part of this work. We are expecting to add a new, um, a new type of infrastructure in, um, this Transit Plan Update of mobility hubs, um, where people, which are areas where people can find and transfer to different types of transportation. We envision these as places where car share, bike share, bus, Uber, Lyft, taxi, and other local services can all, um, come meet in one place and provide a multitude of options for, um, for people to, to get on, to travel to different areas without using their private car. Again, the services at these community mobility hubs will vary by location, um, and we're, we're not sure exactly how many ultimately we'll have, but we do anticipate that we will have several of these in the new Transit, in the new Transit Plan. Um, we do can, you know, Raleigh Union Bus Station, which is under construction now, um, is considered a mobility hub, as well as a new Triangle Mobility Hub that Go Triangle is working on, um, as a relocation of their Regional Transit Center. Both those are funded and planned to open by 2030. Raleigh Union Bus Station is expected to open later this year. And we do, we would consider Morrisville's planned TOD a mobility hub as well. Commuter and passenger rail, um, so we wanted to make sure that folks were familiar with and understood the differences. Commuter rail connects suburban communities to employment centers and is operated by transit agencies typically weekdays, sometimes on weekends. And it was identified in the original Wake Transit Plan, but again, feasibility studies show it's too expensive and will take too long to implement, and frankly, would be at a fairly low frequency, um, as well. Inner-city passenger rail, um, is a different thing that is currently operating today. Amtrak generally operates most passenger rail in the U.S. Um, it does have fewer trips throughout the day outside of major cities. But one thing where you want to look at with the Wake Transit Plan is could we fund, um, potentially, an increased train frequency between key points across the region, whether that's funding specific service or funding infrastructure that can, um, speed up or allow more frequency of those trains. And one thing that we are also looking at with this Transit Plan is to, um, really bring in and include the future S-line corridor, at least a Wake Forest, as part of the, um, Transit Plan as, and include that as an area where, um, rail investment could occur through Wake Transit. We're also looking to continue and, and continue improving infrastructure and access. Um, so, in, um, we want to continue investing in infrastructure. So, we've so far purchased and retrofitted approximately 180 buses throughout, across, um, the, uh, primarily Go Triangle and, and Go Raleigh. Um, and we will continue to do that. We're also looking at improving bus stops and transit centers. We've made a lot of improvements, we want to continue that. We're focusing on purchasing clean fuel vehicles as part of that. Most of Raleigh's new vehicle purchases have been clean fuel vehicles. Excuse me. And we have been successful in leveraging, um, $30 million in Wake Transit funds to get over $133 million in federal funds. And we want to continue to work on that leveraging, um, federal funds and, and other outside funds as we can. Um, we're also adding, we're also going to be looking at adding in a new idea into the Transit Plan, um, looking at safe access to transit, so trying to expand some of that infrastructure funding to include crosswalks, ADA accessibility, as well as continuous connecting, crosswalk, connecting sidewalks. Um, because again, if you can't safely get to the bus stop, then you're still not going to ride the bus stop, even if it's a really, very, very nice bus stop. Um, and then one, finally, I wanted to specifically mention that we are continuing to invest in communities through the Community Funding Area Program. Um, the Morrisville Smart Shuttle is funded through that program now. Um, it funds eligible projects in 10 municipalities and Research Triangle Park. It can fund, this program funds planning and technical assistance, funds operating projects and capital projects. Um, currently, our financial model allocates approximately a little under $20 million from FY '26 to '35. We are looking at near, and at really doubling that amount, um, over the next 10 years with this plan update to $40 million, which would, um, both make the CFA program much more secure and would also allow us to fund more projects through the program. Um, so, this is one of the boards that we were taking out to the public that just, again, summarizes what we're doing, um, both current and planned projects. And again, they're organized under the, um, four big moves. The, um, you know, one of the big new, new ones under connecting the region is this idea of a bus rapid transit route that would run on I-40 between Raleigh and at least RTP, but ideally Raleigh to Durham. Um, so, as of June 7th, you can see our engagement findings, um, that we had there on the screen. We had, we had over 250 survey responses as of the beginning of January. I'm pleased to say that as of tonight, we're over 900 respondents. Um, so we have significantly increased the number of respondents. Um, and, but we still have roughly, the chart there on the right of the screen is still very similar, even with the new responses. Um, majority of people, over 70%, still agree with the approach on rail service, agree with the approach on BRT. Um, I will say, I looked tonight, and the, um, final questions serve more people or serve more places. That, um, has tightened quite a bit, and is now at a 51-49 split. So, um, we'll see, uh, where the final numbers lie, but, um, that does give us some good direction for working up the new investment strategy. Um, finally, I wanted to give council an opportunity to ask questions or provide input on the following slides, um, which were really the boards that we've been using. So, this first board is, um, again, focused on rail, um, explaining what's, what's happening, the fact that Amtrak continue, is and continues to operate train service through Wake County, um, and that there's a lot of rail truck projects planned in the county, um, and how Wake Transit can And how Wake Transit can help improve these existing services or help new projects happen sooner by either providing funding for additional trains or providing funding for train infrastructure. So I wanted to give the council an opportunity here to provide any input that they, that you may like on this particular question. Again, one, the key to this engagement phase has really been, we're asking three primary questions. And so these are the three questions, this question, the next two that you'll see on the screen are really the questions we've been going out to the public with and that are available online as well. So again, I wanted to give the council an opportunity as a group, if you would like to provide any input, you would like to at this time.
Okay. I see Councilmember Fenders, is that, no, from earlier. Mayor Portam-Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Hey Ben. All those, good to see you. And one thing I, I still say, like whenever you come, you get money with, for the projects. So I was hoping the same for today too. My question, can we ask questions in our presentation or only on the slide?
You, you're welcome to ask questions on any of the slides.
Okay. So I'll say, like, you know, 2016, you know, when the transit bond came into, you know, I really went door to door to ensure this bond process. And I remember it was a 51 to 49 kind of a vote. It was very close. And worked very closely with Sig, John and Matt at the time at the Viconti. At the time, my belief was do this and we will get something out of it. And I believe in public transportation, you know, I used it, not here, but where I grew up. And that is a lifeline. I understand the presentations, but the thing that is very disappointing to me is 350 million, you know, has been, I think you said around 350 million has been put into this and 220 million or something has been used, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I appreciate that, you know, they are funding our Smart Shuttle. But the thing very disappointing to me is the BRT, which is coming in. It is no good for the residents of Mooresville. And the reason I say that is it's only helping to get people from outside into the corridor of Mooresville where they go for jobs. It is not going through any of the Davis Drive where the population is. Or it's not even giving an opportunity for us as a residents to go out, you know, using this, you know, like, if I had to go to 55 and wait for a bus, you know, 54 at Wake Tech and wait for a bus and this one, that's not happening. And knowing the frequency and all those things. So that's for me is more of a lip service than really, you know, really something to do. And also for, for me, it is all about what is for Mooresville here. And I wanted to very specifically ask, is Mooresville going to get a train station in material of commuter or, you know, S-line?
And unfortunately, that at this point, I cannot answer that question. There's still a lot of, a lot of information that we need to gather. I will say the transit plan itself is probably not going to answer that question. Whether Mooresville gets a station or not, it's going to be dependent on a number of things. Excuse me. Including, you know, the, the existing rail service, if it expands or not. If other stations are constructed in other areas or not. Where, you know, where the funding comes, as we all know, the federal funding is probably changing over the next few years with that too. So at this point, we can't say for certain one way or the other. We, what I can say is that we will continue to have Mooresville on the map. We will continue to advocate for a train station in Mooresville as best we can. If the opportunity comes along, Wake Transit will, you know, if, if everything works through the process correctly, Wake Transit would fund, you know, would provide funding towards the train station in Mooresville. But we don't have enough information this time. We don't even know, unfortunately, this time with Wake Transit, how we will spend the money we're going to be dedicating towards rail. We've got to do some more studies. One of those studies is underway now by the NPOs. The Regional Rail Implementation Study that I believe Mayor Colley has been participating in. So that will help provide some more information and guidance. But I do believe we probably will need some additional study, even after the transit plan is done, to, to look at the, to continue to look at the rail and see where the investment makes sense, where we can put the investment and where any future stations may go. You know, one of the other things I will say is not, you know, with not having an operator, with not being an operator, you know, with not doing commuter rail, so we're relying at this point probably on Amtrak. To some extent, we're, we're not going to have a, a complete control over where a station may go. Because it would be, you know, really Amtrak and NC DOT and others that may decide, you know, where the stations need to go. So like I said, we'll continue to advocate with Mooresville for a station in Mooresville. And certainly if it, if it looks like that's a possibility, we would want to, you know, we would want, Wake Transit to participate in that. But at this point, I can't guarantee that Mooresville will get a station. There is still a lot up in the air.
So is RTP getting us a train station?
We, that is not, we don't know that yet. There, I mean, I think they've been advocating for one as well. I know there's been some discussions around it, but there's been nothing formalized. It is not in any plans that I'm aware of, that NPO is aware of, that RTP has been guaranteed a station.
So, so, so let me put it this way, Benjamin, you're in transportation and I learned so much from you. Like on, on DOT road, if there's less than 1,000 feet, you would not get a cross access, right? That's, that's a rule set. So using the same logic, with the proximity, assuming RTP is going to get a train station, you think, you know, by the standards of Amtrak, will they put one here?
That I cannot answer, unfortunately. I just, I don't, I don't know those standards very well. And so that would be really something that Amtrak or NC DOT rail or even NCRR may be able to answer.
Okay. I know others will ask the question, but what will I ask, what will I tell the Mooresville residents who have been paying this Wake Transit bond? You know, because TOD, you said the community hub or something will be coming that's long, you know, we are. And, and even the people who are building TOD, you know, we actually told them you will have a train station and that will pack density. And now we are having a different bus station probably, you know. Because I'm having a hard time, what should we say to them?
And, excuse me. That is, you know, that, that's one of the things that's difficult, you know, and, and having been on the other, on this, on the Mooresville side, you know, and advocating so long and then, you know, looking at it from a regional perspective. One thing, you know, I do encourage you to remember this is regional. So the idea, you know, part of the idea behind this is that what, it, what positively impacts the region positively impacts everyone.
But it is not, right? That's the thing. But I, I get, well, I read.
Yeah. And, but I mean, what Mooresville will be getting is, they will be getting a Bus Rapid Transit extension. We don't know exactly what that extension may look like. But I am, I will say, we have funded through the Wake Transit Work Plan, which is our yearly budget for this year. I'm hoping to have it kicked off here in the next couple of months. What we're calling our Concept of Operations Study for those extensions. And so we will be, it's really the next step study that we need to do to be able to get those extensions to where we can begin designing and, and hopefully move those into construction. So we're going to be starting work on that here in the next couple of months. We expect that study to be completed this fall. And then coming out of that study, we'll know exactly the alignment of the extension through Mooresville. Will, we will have a much better idea of where the stops may be, how far, what the spacing may be between the stops. We will also have a, we will also know who the operator will be. Because right now, we don't know who the operator that extension would be. And we would also know what kind of BRT service it would be. There's some different, what I would call flavors of BRT that are available. There's what Raleigh is doing on the New Bern Corridor, where there's some dedicated bus lanes, dedicated stations. Some of that may occur on these extensions, but some of it may also be running in existing lanes and utilizing what we call Q jumps and other things to get around traffic at stoplights. But that's what this next study that we're getting ready to go into will really help us determine and finalize so we can move forward with funding, fully funding the design of these extensions and hopefully getting them into construction in the next few years as well.
Thank you.
Next will be Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Schroggen-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Benjamin. It's always good to see you. As, as the mayor, Portam, you know, I was going to do this in my council comments, but I'll just do it now. I'm, I'm really disappointed about this plan because for a couple of reasons. One, I understand the financial part of it. I mean, the numbers, obviously two billion is a lot of money. But, you know, years of our planning has gone around having a commuter rail stop from TOD, all of the development that's already happened. And it's kind of a step backward for us and also the region because Mooresville has hundreds of, over 100,000 people at least come through Mooresville every day in addition to the ones who live here. So having a rail stop made a lot of sense. I think BRT is valuable, but I think it does undermine the investment we've made in our planning. The other thing about it is that, and Mayor Portam kind of alluded to this, but even though this is a regional issue, I don't see not having commuter rail, you know, I was there when Secretary Buttigieg opened up the S-line. And it's, it's exciting that, I know that it was ARP money coming in, but the bottom line is I don't see that solution taking traffic off the roads. I mean, maybe the Bus Rapid Transit will, but the whole reason we were sold the commuter rail was that, you know, we want to have, you know, traffic's getting worse congestion, having, you know, if I could take a commuter rail from here to Raleigh or I could take a commuter rail to Garner or wherever, it's going to make sense. And I think there's an economic development component of it because, you know, the fact is we're competing, a lot of times we're losing business to Austin and other parts of the country, but having more rail would actually make us more competitive. And so, you know, I'm just, you know, sharing the input. I mean, I, I don't know what the options are. Obviously, you know, I don't know whether we can urge you all to reconsider the decision or, you know, we're working on ideas of how we can collaborate. You know, appreciate your, the efforts that all of you are continuing to look at Mooresville. But I just don't see how we're getting, how this can be positioned as a win for Mooresville. I mean, we're not getting a stop that people promised for over, I've been on the council 14 years and for the entire amount of time we were told and built a plan on commuter rail and now we're not getting it. And I mean, even if I were to get a real stop, what value is it for me to go, I could drive from here to Cary to take the train? So to have a separate Amtrak station in Mooresville. So, so I don't know. I mean, that's just the way I feel about it. I mean, I don't know whether, you know, you know, there's anything, obviously it's a Go Triangle decision. I don't know if we can work with the Wake County Commissioners to try to address this. And I know, I know they're aware of it and it's not their fault. But anyway, that's my thought. I mean, what are your thoughts of what, how we can?
So, I mean, one thing I will say is there is, there is some research out there. There is research out there and things out there showing that BRT can be as much of a driver of TOD development as rail. The other thing I think to keep in mind is that when we, in the original transit plan, when commuter rail was devised, it was a little bit of a different world. We were, you know, it was pre-COVID. Everyone was, for the most part, working in offices. There really wasn't such a thing as working remotely and having the option to not have to go into an office every day and not having to make a 40, 50, 60 mile commute every day. That has changed. And I think that's one of the things that the feasibility study, which some of that work was done after the pandemic happened. I think that's one of the things that that showed too is while, I think if the, if the cost of the commuter rail had, was $2 billion back in 2016, it may have still made some economic sense. Because we would, if, if the pandemic can ever happen, there still could have been maybe a ridership scenario where it made sense and enough people would ride it. I think that's part of the concern and part of the thing that the feasibility study has shown is that while it shows there's decent ridership, it's not great. And then to the federal, even before this current administration, the federal form, the federal funding towards transit projects in general and especially large transit projects like commuter rail really just changed. And, and it became harder and harder to get federal funding for something like a commuter rail system. So that is, those are some of the reasons why we've really tried to step back. The other thing that we, you know, we did look at originally as we were working on this plan, we looked at a scenario of what if we just say we're still all in on commuter rail? If we were to do that, almost nothing else gets built. And even then, it's still a 50-50 shot at best that, that we would actually be able to build the commuter rail and build it within the next 10 years. So it's, it's a congruence of all those facts and things that have come in to lead us to say, really, you know, let's, let's try and invest in the rail that's here, try and improve it if we can, if we can improve the frequency, the span, whatnot. But what else can we do to try and improve transit throughout Wake County? And so that's where we've, you know, that's where it's taken us to looking at this BRT idea along I-40, trying to make sure we move these other BRT projects forward, look at some potential new BRT projects and increasing that community funding area pot so that communities like Mooresville and Apex and others can continue to add more transit service on their own if they, if it's not a completely Wake Transit funded service.
And the final thing I'll say, I mean, I, I know that she, she worked at Go Triangle for a few years, Congressman Ross, I believe, when she left the legislature for a period of time. And I, I know there's federal funding's being cut, it's probably the wrong time to have the federal funding. But have any efforts been made, I mean, obviously she's probably aware of this, but she represents a large part of Wake County. So, or she represents Wake County, I mean, I don't know whether it was up to you.
I'm, I'm not sure what kind of conversations have taken place since the feasibility studies wrapped up on the commuter rail about future federal funding. I know, I, I wasn't involved, but I know a number of, I guess it's been now a year or two ago. You know, there was some news that came out where I believe it was Mary Ann Baldwin from Raleigh had, you know, did a, a news story came out where she had had some conversations with federal officials and was told that commuter rail really was not feasible from their perspective. No one, I don't know if that was true or not, but you know, that's about all that I know is what's been in the news. For the most part, from the Wake Transit standpoint, once the second phase of the feasibility study was completed by Go Triangle, they really have sort of taken a step back and have looked to the Wake County region to, to decide what we want to do on commuter rail before they do anything else.
Councilmember Schroggen-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Hello, how are you doing? Haven't seen you in a while. I'm going to repeat some things that you've already discussed with my fellow council members because I feel very passionate about it and it's important that the public understand where my position is. So I am disappointed to hear that Mooresville, who has invested significant time and effort to develop the TOD plan, is not getting a rail station at this time and it's not in the foreseeable future because of the way that light rail is going and, and some of that. But I'm really disappointed to hear that the Bus Rapid Transit, which is a more flexible program, is also not planned at this time for Mooresville. And I think that is a significant challenge.
Sorry, if I can make a correction. It is planned. The Bus Rapid Transit is still planned for Mooresville.
It is still planned?
Yes, it is still in the plan. And, and where, that's where that Concept of Operations Study I mentioned is specifically looking at the two extensions, the one through Mooresville and the one out of Garner towards Clayton.
So would that be possibly in the TOD, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, I mean, we, we still have to nail down the final alignment and everything. But based on the major investment study that was completed a couple of years ago. a couple of years ago, the um I think, if I, I haven't looked at it in a little while, so I may be wrong, but I believe the um MIS recommended alignment along McCrimmon to the TOD and then up 54 um into the RTP area. So with the idea being that that TOD site around McCrimmon and 54 would be one of the major stations um for that bus rapid transit.
Excellent. I misunderstood. I appreciate you doing the clarification. We're really hoping that McCrimmon Flyover gets funded pretty soon because that's also a key component to this whole puzzle that we have, and it is quite a puzzle. Um, I would like to see if Morrisville can also be part of what we call like an RDU loop. I I know that there's been a need to have um a shuttle to the airport um for a lot of our travelers in Morrisville as well as in surrounding area. And we have, I think, there's a shuttle that goes from the airport to Raleigh, but it just makes sense due to the density that you explained, you know, and the surrounding area, that there also be some sort of loop on the west side of the county. Um, and I think that's important for the taxpayers as well. Um, I would like to know, you know, that Morrisville is not a donor city, that they are actually kind of breaking even on the the tax dollars that they're contributing to the transit plan. It seems like um some things are more donor-based and so forth. We do have the shuttle that we've been operating, but there seems to be more connected um opportunities. We need to get our cars off the road in Morrisville as an employment center town. We have a lot of traffic. And everything that we can do with bus rapid transit, looking at the shuttle program, connecting um people across the county so that they can not necessarily sit in their cars forever, is something that is really important to us. And also the airport loop. I I'm, um, that's a uh really golden opportunity, I think, for the county is to open the access to the airport because it is doing tremendous growth right now with the amount of airlines and and access for our entire region. So um, I think that's all I have for now. I know there's other um opportunities for the council to extend on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Thank you. Um, hi, nice to see you again. Um, could we go back to slide seventeen, the one that had the um the proposed map of the bus routes? I'm not sure it was seventeen, I'll tell you when I see it. Oh, that was it, this one. Okay. Um, so what I'm looking at here, if I understand it correctly, is a map of bus routes and the frequency with which those routes would be, would occur. So like in Raleigh, there'd be buses every fifteen minutes. In, it looks like a fairly decent area of Morrisville, there would be buses every thirty minutes. And then the, but to Scroggins, to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's point, I don't see anything going really from anywhere to the airport except, I mean, except like from Raleigh. And that, I agree, is a missed opportunity. Um, but also, I don't, I I'm looking at this and I don't really understand what the, so when you say that there's gonna be a mobility hub in Morrisville, the picture that you showed of the mobility hub, um, there it is. The, so this picture to me, and you know, certainly no offense intended, but this looks to me like a bus stop. And if, so are we talking about the mobility hub, which would be the new basis of our transit-oriented development? Is this what we're talking about? Or are you talking about something like you're putting in Raleigh where it's an actual bus station with, you know, with?
Yeah, and that's where we've, we've, I think, to some degree, purposely been vague on mobility hub and and to some degree, not really sure. Um, we were, I think, this picture was put together by our consultants um just so that, to show something of what could be a mobility hub. I agree, this is probably more on the simplistic side of a mobility hub. Um, but a mobility hub, and that's why I mentioned Raleigh Union Station, Raleigh Union Station Bus Facility, Triangle Mobility Hub, those are are larger, more regional um bus stations type mobility hubs. So I'm not, I would say at this point, I don't think there's anything saying that Morrisville couldn't have something more like that. Um, a lot of it's gonna end up, depending on the design of the TOD. I know, you know, obviously the TOD, you're relying, you know, your, the plan right now is to rely on a lot of private development. I will say, you know, as we work through the transit plan update and finish that, if the mobility hubs um continue to, you know, stay in there, which I do anticipate they will be, there could be some opportunity for some, you know, for Morrisville to request some Wake Transit funding um to help you, to to help spark that development, the, at least the transit side of that development. I can't speak to that for certain, but I think, you know, there's, there's some possibilities there. Um, there's also always the community funding area program too, that um we are looking at some changes to that, which um hopefully I'll be able to to give you some more information on how that program will change in a couple of months, or your staff can do that. Um, we're having some discussions later this week on that. But um I've, just to this point, to this picture, this is just a, it was a picture that was chosen to represent something, but it's certainly not definitive of what a mobility hub must be or or will be.
Because when I'm picturing a mobility hub that would support the type of density and development that we're talking about, I'm picturing something, I mean, maybe not like Forty Second Street in New York, but I'm like Port Authority or something, but I'm definitely picturing something that would have a significant amount of traffic going in and out of it every day on many different routes to many different places. And and you know, not just, frankly, not just out of Morrisville, but anybody that's been on 40 trying to get here from Raleigh in the morning knows that to your, the point in your own slides, Morrisville has more jobs than people. People need to get here, and they need to get here from all over the place. So I, you know, I just want to make sure this is not what we're talking about, cutting it for that, for that purpose. But if you go back to slide nineteen for one second, and I will tell you, Ben, I'm a bus girl, all right? I grew up in New Jersey. I rode suburban transit literally everywhere and connected from there to all different, you know, to different bus routes. And but the key to successful bus transportation is really two things, and that's connections and frequency. And so as I look at the, I wish we could make this a little bigger, but but as I look at the, you know, the route through Morrisville, and it's, you know, I get it, it's like a circle, it's intended to be, you know, at a um kind of serve the main route, routes through Morrisville. But would there be, do you think, some type of additional funding where we could expand our smart shuttle service to come from this loop, which is a fairly broad loop, it doesn't, you know, may not touch every large population center in Morrisville? You know, would there be some type of opportunity for new funding to expand our smart shuttle service, to make up for all the places that we're not able to go? And follow-up question before you even answer the original question. What about um, what about service from some of these bus lines to places in, like in Cary where our people want to go? Like, what are the opportunities there without having to go to a regional transportation center to get to like, I mean, I know this is in Apex, but like to get to the mall from Morrisville? That would be helpful.
Yeah, and I, I think there are gonna be a lot of opportunities. Um, one caveat I'll say is this picture on this slide is from the existing bus plan. Um, and so it's the, and it's showing what is currently planned through 2030. As part of this transit plan effort, we'll be updating that, so we'll actually start working on an update to our bus plan um later this year, this fiscal year, um probably at the end of this year, early next year, that will, the bus plan flows out of the transit plan. So it, this picture could change in another year to year and a half. Um, the new bus plan will go, will, the bus plan, um, if you ever look at the bus plan, what you'll see is, we have the bus plan that goes out through, current bus plan goes out through 2030, and then we have, um, as part of that, we have what we call short-range transit plans for each of the agencies that go out through about 2027. So with this bus plan update that we'll be starting late this year, early next year, we'll be looking at updating and essentially going from FY27 in our short-range plans out to about 30 or 31, with the long-range plan going out to 35. So we'll, and we'll also know, we'll have a lot better idea at that point about how much money will be available. The other thing to remember is, this bus plan was developed with, when commuter rail is, with commuter rail in the plan and and frankly sucking up, you know, two billion dollars of funding. If we remove that commuter rail piece, that could potentially, and we, we need to finalize everything over the next month, but removing commuter rail could free up a billion dollars or close to a billion dollars that we could use to add more bus service. And a billion dollars will go a very long way to add local bus service. Um, and so that's where, that is really one of the things we're really looking at is, if we back away from commuter rail per se and start putting more money into bus service, where else can we serve other than what we're serving today? And that's where we do believe that we can open up a lot more opportunities to serve, you know, to provide more service in Morrisville and all the other areas. And then, like you said too, there's always a community funding area program and where, um, as I mentioned, we're in, we're doubling the investment in that, which will provide more funding to allow communities to to request more funding and do more service. And then we're also looking, um, as I mentioned, where we're gonna have a a regional meeting um of the staff and the consultants um later this week, where we're gonna re, really be talking about some of the policy level questions around the community funding area and look at, you know, the match requirement and some other things and and how we may want to change that with this new influx of funding and what what that could allow. Um, so I think at the end of the day, the transit plan itself, when, when the draft transit plan comes out later this spring, it will not show a lot of, it will not necessarily show you a lot more local service. It's going to be very focused on the high-level things, but what it does is it sets our goal for, of funding and everything for the local service, that we then will use the bus plan to come back and follow up with that and figure out where all that local service money will go and how those local services will be developed. But um, all that to say, you know, connecting communities and and adding more service where there's obviously needs for it is, are some things we've really been looking hard at and are trying to do with this plan update.
I, I mean, just to be clear, I am as deeply disappointed by the commuter rail decision as my colleagues, and I certainly hope that the updates to the bus plan don't have the same disastrous consequences for Morrisville. But I, you know, I, you know, like I said, I do just want to leave you with the service to the airport being very important, frequent routes into, out of, and through Morrisville also being very important in any kind of bus discussion, and a, and a substantive mobility, mobility center, if there is to be a mobility center, a substantive mobility center. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
So Ben, it's good to see you again, and it sounds like you're not feeling well like most of us in this room. We're all under the weather, so appreciate you um powering through with us, with us. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna um start where Councilmember Rabadi ended about the mobility hub, because I was gonna ask that, about that as well. And she's, she's kinder than I'm gonna be, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure how robust you make it or not. I'm not sure that's, for me personally, is gonna be a a good swap for a, whatever we call, that we're gonna call it a commuter rail station, a passenger rail sta- station. I mean, I ju, I just don't see it. I'll try to be as open-minded as I can going forward, but I just don't see it as being a good trade-off for the town of Morrisville. And and so let me say this, you know, as disappointed as I am, like the rest of us, um, I get it, I get the whole financial piece of it. I'm not oblivious to that, but um, you know, our job is to advocate for the town of Morrisville and to um remind everyone of the great amount of work and time and effort that has gone into our planning for a commuter rail station, passenger rail station, whatever you want to call it. And so it 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 is kind of deeply disappointing that we're got, we've gotten to this point, and we'll continue to advocate um as best we can. So um, I get, I guess what I really, I really want to ask Michelle a question more than um than anything, because Ben, you asked us to answer three questions, and we haven't gotten to one of them yet. So um, it, Michelle, and I have not read this letter, what what you've put in this letter, is that gonna address some of those, some of the detail in those questions? Is that gonna help? Or, and I, again, have not, I glanced at the letter and haven't been able to to read it in detail.
Yeah, and understandable. We just handed it out to you tonight. Uh, but we wanted to make sure you had it so you could start looking at it following this discussion. Um, the letter does talk um about rail. Um, it does include some of the comments that staff thought we heard from you at the work session. Um, does make note of potentially no longer being the airport stop. I am hearing additional questions and comments from council tonight as well about the mobility hub and other items that are not in the draft letter. So I would just encourage you, you're getting more information from Campo this evening. Um, there's an opportunity to revise that. I think, even though the public engagement um ends here at the end of the month, Ben graciously graciously said he could give us a week. Um, but we do need to finalize that and get that to Campo so they could move forward with the rest of the process and their planning.
Okay, okay. And so, thank you for that. I appreciate. So then, Ben, just the, the last couple of comments that I, um, I am happy to hear, there's potential for conversation around the BRT and what it may or may not look like in Morrisville. I mean, we've heard about the McCrimmon up 54, um, but that's, again, even that's probably not enough then. Um, and so if there's the ability to have more conversation um around what that looks like in the future, I, I, I would think we're gonna be open to that. And so then, the last thing I just want to say is, um, you know, hints, hints and tips on how do we move forward to get our point across, um, besides this letter. I mean, you talked about the fact that it's gonna be Amtrak and um NC DOT that are gonna make this decision. And and oh, by the way, on your slide twenty-one, I'm happy to see Morrisville is still on uh on that map. Um, I, again, I'm disappointed because I have a, I, I'm not sure how long it's gonna stay there. But anyhow, so obviously co- um contacting Amtrak, NC DOT, any other hints and tips?
I mean, really, uh, you know, Caleb's done a great job with being involved in Wake Transit. He participates in all of our meetings. He's been participating in um, in a number of our meetings about this plan update. So, I mean, you have really good staff support. Um, and and again, leaning on Caleb to to be a conduit of information to you. Um, but yeah, I mean, other than that, you know, continuing to try and talk to NC DOT, um, NC DOT Rail, NC DOT uh in Integrated Mobility Division, um, those folks are really probably the best people to start with. Um, and just, you know, continuing to make sure they're aware of your, your desires and, you know, where you think things need to go um for Morrisville. And then, you know, through Caleb, um, through his work on the Program Development Subcommittee and at the T-PAC, continuing to advocate for Morrisville, which he does a great job of. Um, and then, you know, as we, as we finalize this plan and then move into the bus plan, you know, we'll continue to have him involved um as a Morrisville representative on, on these things, and um we'll continue to see where everything takes us.
Okay. You just said something really important, our desire. Yeah, we have a desire, but I think there's great opportunity too. That's why. That, and I don't want that opportunity to be misunderstood or not. I, I, I want that opportunity here in the town of Morrisville for um, for this kind of transit to be highlighted and elevated and shared. And and so that, that's the kind of help I think I'm looking for, tips I'm looking for. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fender followed by myself.
Hey, Ben. Um, a couple of questions. It is my understanding that um, a federal grant was given, and I don't know if it was given to Go Triangle or RTP, but there's plans in the works to move the Regional Transit Center to closer to Hub RTP.
Yes, Go Triangle received, I believe it's a twenty-two or twenty-three million dollar grant um to, to assist with, to provide funding towards the, what they're calling the- grant to, to assist with, to provide funding towards the, what they're calling the Triangle Mobility Hub project.
And that is gonna be located at the corner of fifty-four and Miami Boulevard.
That is my understanding.
Which is right by the railroad. So, so they were, so they were given twelve million five million dollar grant. They're gonna be moving that Regional Transit Center to this location that's gonna be right by the, the railroad, two miles north, about two miles, north of our TOD area. The likelihood of them having a stop at Morrisville, to me, I mean, I hate to say it, guys, but I think it's highly unlikely that they will ever have a Morrisville stop as you show here. So, to answer your question, is this a good way of building rail service in Wake County? No. I mean, I get it. And like, a lot of the council members have said, the town has invested a lot of money developing that land, as you're aware. And I was also reading, so that happened in July last year.
I believe so. That sounds about right.
And then I was also reading that the previous Go Triangle CEO resigned in September, and he had been brought in specifically to work on light rail. And he, and so then he does, he resigned after the federal grant was given for the S-line. So I'm wondering, so that was in September. Why are we just talking about this now? It looks like back in September, the writing was on the wall that we were not gonna be getting a commuter rail line.
Well, there's been, so with Wake Transit, the, the commuter rail is still in the current Wake Transit Plan. The current Wake Transit Plan was last adopted in twenty-twenty-one. So from Wake Transit's perspective, it is still a thing, it is still in the financial model, you know. And so regionally though, the two MPOs have had, have been having discussions. Mayor, I know you've been involved, I think, going on two years now almost, ever since Go Triangle completed the feasibility study for the, the phase two of the feasibility study for the commuter rail, talking about whether commuter rail is, from a regional perspective, and, and this is, when I say regional perspective, this is the two MPOs, so the Durham Chapel Hill Carrow MPO, which I believe has just changed its name, and Campo, they formed, they each formed a rail subcommittee out of their executive board membership to meet and talk about this. And so those entities have been talking about commuter rail. And I think my understanding is that at that level, the discussion has been more about, based on the feasibility study, commuter rail really doesn't seem feasible. And so we're trying to catch up for Wake Transit to that. So there's been a lot of conversations going on at different levels. But that's why you're just seeing this now from Wake Transit is that this is our, this has really been our first opportunity to, to come in and follow up some of those larger regional conversations and say, based on these larger regional conversations and these feasibility studies, it seems like there's a growing agreement that commuter rail may not be feasible for the region. It was a centerpiece of the Wake Transit Plan, so what do we do now?
Is there, did the study look at not just commuting for work, but how a commuter rail can be used to bring in visitors, like go, like for events at the PNC arena, or just going to downtown Raleigh?
Yeah. That I'm not completely sure of. There was a Go Triangle-led study, and it was actually completed, I think, in the time that I left here and, and was working outside of Wake County. So I'm not completely familiar with what the ultimate findings of the feasibility study were and where, what exactly it looked at. I know, you know, one of the difficulties with the commuter rail, there's a couple of difficulties with the commuter rail that, that I think are, have flowed down and, and caused a lot more difficulties. One being that it's, it is expensive in and of itself to start up something like that, a brand-new service, you know, even buying trains and whatnot. The other, another big difficulty is just how the rail corridor through central Wake County is managed. It is owned by NCRR, and they have a large lease to Norfolk Southern to, who really has operational control over the corridor. I spent years working here in Morrisville, banging my head against the wall, trying to talk to NCRR and, and Norfolk Southern about, you know, we, I mean, you're well aware, there's been numerous discussions with them and difficulties with them in any of the rail crossings in town and the McCrimmon Parkway ever pass. So that's another difficulty that has always been there with the commuter rail is the, there was a, there, there's a strong hesitance on behalf of NCRR and Norfolk Southern to allow more trains in that corridor. And they had some very specific requirements that would have had to be put in place. And so that, again, drove up costs. So it, it's a broad confluence of things. I think the feasibility study may have gone into some of that in, in some more detail. But I would suggest, you know, if you want to know more, reaching out to Go Triangle or even reaching out to NC DOT Rail or NCRR could provide you some more detail on some of that, too.
Okay. Well, lastly, I'll just say, I'm just very frustrated that the Triangle doesn't have a light rail or commuter rail system. You know, it's so nice when traveling, like even just flying into Atlanta, to be able to get on MARTA, you know, right out of the airport and go to wherever you need to go. And then anytime, like you go up northeast or in other countries, you know, my, my son and I were just in Italy and Rome and Naples. And it's so nice just to be, get on the train and go. And it's just so disappointing that Charlotte has a commuter rail, but between Durham Chapel Hill and Raleigh, we still do not have one. And, and I know you understand. So I appreciate you coming here today and going over all this with us. Thank you.
One final quick thing I'll say just to that point, that, again, is, is worth keeping in mind is the development patterns from the last thirty, fifty years in the Triangle area and Wake County and Durham and Orange. We, you know, one of the downsides that, and I think one of the things that we've always been fighting uphill about with any type of transit, but especially premium transit, like commuter rail, light rail, even BRT to some extent, is the fact that we do not have a, a central business district, a central business city. Charlotte, a lot of people coming to downtown Charlotte, there's a bunch of banks there. There's a lot of corporations and businesses there in Charlotte. Here, we have, we have RTP as one. Morrisville has a lot of businesses now. Downtown Raleigh now has a lot of stuff. Downtown Durham has a lot of stuff. There's not that central one hub that everyone is going to every day. Not saying that it's, it's not possible, but it just, that's one of the things that I think we've always been fighting on, fighting against as a region too, is the last thirty, forty years of planning and, and the fact that we don't have that central area where everyone goes, comes in to work. It's, there's about four, five, or ten different little areas. And over the last few years, as you've all seen, more have popped up in, in other areas too. So it's getting even more and more difficult. So, and with Wake Transit, we don't, we don't do a whole lot about land use. We can preach to you and we can recommend things to you, but we don't have land use control. So, Mayor?
Welcome back, Ben. I gotta acknowledge, congratulations on the bowl win. I was there. It's very disappointing. My son's at NC State now. But yeah, we were, I guess, a little bit late to the party as compared to Charlotte in regards to light rail and things like that. Federal government no longer supports any of that kind of stuff. So, like Satish, I mean, Councilmember Pretend Garamilla, been very involved in the whole transit plan since twenty-sixteen. Mark Stolman was one of the two representatives of the mayor's kind of making it happen for their community. And although we haven't seen, I think, as much as we'd like, the fact that the smart shuttle is operating well and that pivot away from commuter rail for numerous reasons, including lack of federal funding and the need to double track to really make it happen. So the cost went way up and our revenues went way down. This may be an opportunity for us to enhance the community area plans to do things. But that being said, I think it's really important to keep on pushing hard for BRT, which is gonna be really important. Jill Malazo from RTA keeps on talking, that's buses resembling trains. So we can still meet the needs, it'll just be on the roads. And if you could actually go back to that slide you just were at, had a nice conversation with Chris Lucina after last Campo meeting, who indicated that there are different models. And Councilmember Fender makes a really great point. Why would you put two stations so close together? He indicated that there's some models in which a train from Durham would stop at RTP and go to Cary and Raleigh. And then the next train would go from Durham to Morrisville to Cary to Raleigh. So alternating those two stations. So there's still needs being met. For example, if Permanente Park was still full of office goers, COVID kind of cut that down, we would be one of the largest employment centers in the region. So plans are changing to meet the needs. Nobody wants to see a whole lot of trains running empty, for example. So I think it's really pragmatic. And Wake Transit, I appreciate the efforts you guys are making to ask people, what's, what are people looking for, doing studies to find out what's actually gonna work. I was surprised to see how dense we are compared to the rest of Wake County. I guess not that surprised because we are really, we're a small area, but we have a lot of people and a lot of jobs. So I just wanted to share that, that bit about the alternating stops, which I think is really important. Campo has indicated that it is on the plan to have our stop. They're planning to advocate strongly for that. And we will all be generating, looking to generate support of all the decision makers in the region to make sure that the stop happens and not just because we've planned for it, but because it benefits the region. So that's, I think, what we're gonna be doing moving forward. Really appreciate you coming here today. And I think you have more presentation to give us, right?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll go through these next few slides. I think we covered a lot of them. This next slide is just the, really the board about the, the potential bus rapid transit along I-40. A representative picture showing what it could look like utilizing the shoulders, beefing up the, the shoulders, the bus on shoulder program to allow bus rapid transit to use it and doing some other things. And just the, one of the things that's interesting is that chart there at the top that just gives you an, a comparison between express service, which is really what we have going now and what we have planned, and then this BRT service. And showing you that, you know, the BRT service, while it may not cut a lot of time down necessarily on the travel time, it can provide a lot more frequency where you, you don't have to sit there and look at a schedule and to step out and catch a bus. You can step out and, you know, catch a bus within about twenty or thirty minutes, no matter when you step out there. So, you know, that's really what we're looking for is to, to really, the idea being, and the reason we've looked at that I-40 corridor, although that's not finalized, but that's sort of what we're aiming at right now is because that most closely matches the commuter rail alignment. Obviously, it doesn't come through downtown, you know, or come through the central area of Morrisville, but it does still provide that connection that the commuter rail really would have provided. And then the final question we've asked is, you know, really, what, what do we want to do first? We're not saying this is an either or. We're saying we, we're fairly confident that we can do a certain extent of both. What, what should we focus on first? Serving more people so that's getting services out there, improving frequency, improving span. For the most part, you know, focusing probably on existing bus routes first and, and bringing all those up to a certain level? Or should we look at serving more places first? And that's more of a capital heavy, where we would be putting a lot of money into capital at first that you may not see results from for several years. Whereas under the option one, the idea is that we'd be putting money towards that and you would see results fairly quick. But again, with option one, it's likely going to be more focused around Raleigh and Cary because that's where a lot of the existing routes are. So in your, in your comment letter, you know, please, if you can make sure to, to address this particular question, I'm pretty sure I know where you would, would probably fall on it. But again, it'll be helpful to, to have that from you. One thing I will say, and Mayor, I think you said you were at the, I think you may have been at the RTA event on Friday. Oh, well, okay. Well, so Joe Malazo had his RTA event on Friday, and he actually brought up these three questions and had the entire room answer three questions with him. And so the one things he did mention is, you know, that, that we've talked about is serving more places. One of the projects that we felt, that we feel likely would fall under that option is a potential new bus rapid transit route in Cary. Again, not directly in Morrisville, but close by. So there's, there is, you know, a potential of looking at a BRT route along the Harrison Avenue, Kildare Farm Road corridor. But, and then, you know, there's, there's a lot more that I think we can do where, again, the transit plan itself is high level and it sets the, it'll set our priorities and sort of put some, some funding towards the big moves. And then we'll have follow-up bus plan and other plans where we'll decide exactly how that money will be used and where it'll go and, and what projects it'll go to. So more to come on that. And then finally, just wanted to give an overview of the next steps. So this plan update has been going on for just at a year now. We had our first engagement last spring, early summer. We spent the summer looking at goals, priorities, strategic direction, using the feedback from that phase one state of the transit plan engagement. And then this fall, we've been really working on, finally, on getting information on our financial capacity and developing these scenarios that then flowed down into these questions I've been talking about with you tonight. We're in the current engagement period that ends this month. And then after this, we'll be working on developing our final recommendations and bringing out the draft study, the draft plan that'll have its engagement in the spring. We're looking in late April, early May timeframe for about a thirty-day, a six-week engagement period. And then we expect to have the plan finalized this summer and moving into the adoption process through the Wake Transit adoption process. So that would be through Campo and Go Triangle. And then the next steps, looking ahead over the next couple of months, we have a partner staff workshop. Actually, it's later this week, the last two days of this week. We are partners from across the region, across Wake County are gonna be, have been invited. And we'll, we're gonna be focusing on some policy discussions and then beginning to develop our draft investment strategy. We'll have another partner staff meeting in February where we'll go review the engagement findings from this engagement phase and work on finalizing the recommendations for that investment strategy. We're looking to hold our Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting, and this has changed. It's now gonna be in early March. Keep an eye out for those that are on, for those of you in this room that are on that committee. There should be an email coming out in the next week or so. We're targeting, I think, the first week of March where we'll run through a recommendations workshop with that stakeholder group to help us finalize the investment strategy. And then again, we'll be bringing out that draft Wake Transit Plan by mid-March with engagement in April, May, and finalizing the consultant work by then to June. And then the summer, we'll be moving into the adoption process. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have. I know y'all, you've had quite a bit of discussion and questions already. So, but if there's any final things, I'm happy to, I answer what I can.
Bless you. I saw Councilmember Rabadi earlier. Did you have a question that we went past?
It wasn't a question so much as an observation. The slides where you showed that the, a couple of slides back where you showed the, oh, right here, the expanded bus service in Cary and Raleigh or the new or expanded connections to Cary and Raleigh. I think that you would be wise to consider updating that I think that you would be wise to consider updating that to be Cary, Morrisville, and Raleigh, because I know that there are, you know, Cary is very large, but our experience suggests that where a lot of Cary residents, especially those on the west side want to go, is to and through Morrisville. So I would be really interested in seeing, you know, I'd like to see Morrisville be part of these conversations.
Well, and that's why we did add in other regional destinations. We, and it didn't, it may not have come through well, but with that option two, I mean, one thing that we have, that I think we're looking at as part of that option is some more of those connections from town to town outside of having to go just to Raleigh or just to Cary to get out. Right now, a lot of our system is you have to go to downtown Cary, you have to go downtown Raleigh to then come back out. And where, with that option two, that's where we really would be looking at, are there ways to connect, say Apex and Morrisville, so you don't have to go into Cary to go back out, but instead just go direct? And so that is, that would fall under that option two, again, trying to serve more places. There's just only so much words we could put on the slide.
Yeah, I think regional destinations is more likely to call to mind Durham, Chapel Hill, Raleigh. You know, I'm not sure that, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that people will get, you know, Morrisville, Apex, Garner from the phrase regional destinations. But I, you know, again, I really appreciate you being here, and I appreciate all this information.
I also had just one little observation. You said something about Cary getting an RTP, I mean a BRT stop. It's my understanding that's already on the plan, the Western BRT.
Yeah, so Cary, so the Western Corridor BRT terminates in downtown Cary. I was saying, the, one of the new projects that you may see in the transit plan, in the draft transit plan when it comes out, is a, this idea of a potential BRT line along Harrison Avenue and Kildare Farm Road corridor. And it would be a BRT line. So that would be a Cary project if it were to come to fruition. But that is something that we're looking at.
So they make a cross essentially, but yeah, we've been advocating to keep the BRT going further to reach Morrisville.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to do so.
That is, that is in the plan, and we have, we are not looking at changing that at all.
Okay, wonderful. Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
Yeah, Ben, just one thing after what Donna talked about. The Wake Transit is, was a bond paid by the Wake County residents, correct?
It is, the primary funding source is a sales tax. It is a half-cent sales tax that is paid by anyone who purchases goods or services or products in Wake County, regardless of where they live.
Yeah, okay. And then it will be used towards the greater good of Wake County, correct? So having a train station in RTP or Miami and 54, those are not even Wake County. So why is our tax dollars going there? Which is, I'm just curious.
And that's something, you know, we, again, there's been no decision that there will be a train station in RTP. I mean, frankly, with the commuter rail, it was going to run through that area as well, and I think we were looking at a stop there. So it's just one of those things that it, the law, the law that authorized the sales tax says, for the best part, that the money should be spent in Wake County, but there is some flexibility to spend the money outside of Wake County where it truly benefits Wake County. And the thought has always been providing transit in and around RTP or transit stops in RTP that connect into Wake County provides benefit to Wake County, both to residents of Wake County and those that are, that work in Wake County that live outside of Wake County.
Okay. For me, charity begins from home, so, anyway, thank you.
Okay. Did you get what you needed from us at this time?
Yeah.
Those three questions are good. Okay. Anything else from staff? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Come back and visit us again. Okay. At this time, we are at public address. I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Bianca. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. We have two people, William Dukovich, he has signed up, and we also had one submission, but I believe that he is here tonight. And that is from, excuse me, Harrison Kiesling. Is that you? All right. If you could come up here and sign this piece of paper for me, you'll be second in line. The both of you each get, oh, you already signed this, thank you. Three minutes to comment. Give me one second.
If you could start with your name and your residential address. After that point, the clock will begin. Thank you, sir. Right into the, right into the microphone, if you would.
On Justice Walk Avenue in Morrisville.
What address?
1112 Justice Walk Avenue in Morrisville.
Thank you.
Thank you for offering me the opportunity to speak to you today. I've talked to you before on this topic. I'm on the board of the Morrisville Veterans Memorial and concerned with the current design for the memorial. I've been on the foundation board since 2018. I think we have a design, but I don't think we have it right. And I'm going to propose, let's jump to the future, when the Morrisville Veterans Memorial has its opening day. The foundation has raised 928,000 from donors and given a check to the town to build the memorial. Now, so now the memorial has been built, and today we're going to cut the ribbon. We all love ribbon cutting, but maybe we should take a look, do we have any second thoughts? Maybe veterans should have had a greater input in the design. Another question is, will veterans use it? I'm not sure. The town council wanted to be helpful and paid for a design. Town committees managed the design process to add minimal veterans input, and the plan did not address environmental sustainability. The plans included an internal flame to build fossil fuels 24/7, paid for by the taxpayers. Now, Morrisville has been recognized as an all-American city. Applications are being accepted for the 2025 award. The 2025 theme is strengthening environmental sustainability through inclusive community engagement. Let me say that goal one more time. Strengthening environmental sustainability through inclusive community engagement. The goal makes a lot of sense. I would expect that an all-American city would practice inclusive community engagement in the design of a memorial for veterans or the primary stakeholders. The current plans were never reviewed for environmental sustainability. The town council has obligations, and they should review the current vision for the memorial, since it will be built by the town on town property. So very soon, the memorial will be a done deal and not fixable. I think it's important that the town council ask some questions about the plans for the memorial. I was reluctant to go public with the issues with the memorial design, but I do not see any other option. I have some questions, and these are some suggested questions that I think the town council should ask. Was the community engaged in the design process? Morrisville is fortunate to have active veterans and environmental communities. At a VFW meeting, we took a poll of people that supported the foundation plan. Forty-nine people were opposed to supporting the foundation plan. There was not one person at that, how much time do I have?
You're done with your time? Finish that one last thought, we'd be happy to receive an email from you with the rest.
I thank you for the opportunity to express my views. I hope that the council will look into the design principles followed in the design. As a veteran and a taxpayer, I believe that the town council has an obligation to ensure that the town design process engages citizens and respects the veterans' community.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to send us a follow-up email with all the details, towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov. If you could start with your name and your residential address, you'll have three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Harrison Kessling. I live at 402 Mannington Drive, 27560. Town Clerk Robati, one of your constituents. So I work in downtown Raleigh, I work for an engineering firm, mechanical, plumbing design, we work in the truest building. I regularly, or whenever I can, I take the number 100 bus at the Regional Transit Center down into Raleigh in the morning and then back in the evenings. I have to drive from where I live to get to the Regional Transit Center. And the main thing that I'm thinking about, and what I've heard tonight, is, you know, disappointment with commuter rail. I'm encouraged by the disappointment. I'm glad to see that all of you are, you know, strong advocates for transit in the Triangle. I do think, though, that maybe not thinking so much about commuter rail, I know it's disappointing and all that, but definitely having more of that regional access via buses, I think that's very important. I want, I want, you know, a resident of Morrisville, I want, I'm not saying you, I want whoever's in charge of this, I want you to get me to the Regional Transit Center. I want you to get me to Cary. I want to be able to get from West Cary, the west side of Morrisville, into, you know, the rest, to connect with the rest of the region, really connect with Raleigh, connect with Cary, connect with these places that I want to go to. I would have come here tonight via transit. I actually had a site visit, Raleigh Fire Station 20, I was there, there's a bus stopped right by it. I was waiting there at the bus, and I was going to take that bus up to, is the number 11, take that up close, take the 300, get into Cary, and then take the 310 or the 7 to get close, and then have a 25-minute walk to get here. I wasn't going to rely on the smart shuttle, because I found that it's a bit unreliable. I was willing to do that if it was going to get me here on time. And it wasn't, there's a delay. I know probably that you all think that option two from that Wake Transit plan is what you, what is needed, and I strongly support that. But I do think that increasing frequency to what we have, with the addition of getting some sort of direct connection into Morrisville proper, I think that that would be highly beneficial. Get me the frequency to get me in and around, you know, the core of Wake County, you know, as much as I can, but then at least have, even if it's an hour, you know, have that route that gets me, or hour frequency, get me to that, you know, to downtown Morrisville. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
We've heard from everyone who signed up to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanted an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes? I'd like to, yep, if you could go ahead and sign the sheet.
I know you have a policy, when people comment during a meeting, that you can't respond. That does not mean that I can't respond to a comment. It was said before by Bill that there wasn't enough input. Well, we had five different input sessions. Bill and another person on the foundation at the time were VFW members. Most of the time, neither one of them came to those inputs, and they didn't invite any other veterans, like he said, that did not give the input. The environmental situation, right now, where the memorial is going to go is grass. And what we have is a design, we don't have plans, so we can bring in environmental things when we get the plans. So what he says is, you know, I, my mother had, was a very proper Southern woman, and she very rarely cussed, but what she would say to what Bill said was old shillelagly. Thank you.
Your name and residential address for the record, please, sir.
Bob Butler, 112 Lee Croft.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, so that was our public address for the evening. And as a reminder, we encourage the submission of written comments, as they offer a valuable way for the community members to share their feedback. Towncouncil@townofmorrisville dot, nope, towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov. So we're at future meetings, events, and resident involvement opportunities. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. We're now at council comments, and then we'll take a break. I will share first, and be followed by Councilmember Robati. I'd like to first off say thank you to staff who attended and who contributed, which is pretty much our entire town staff, for setting the table for some very productive discussions this past weekend at our annual retreat. Although, even the people who weren't there contributed a lot into making our discussions really good. I look forward to this year's budget process, as we balance meeting our family's desire for robust programs and amenities, with the resources needed to provide our wants and needs in the most efficient manner possible. I was going to say something about the Super Bowl coming up, but it's still too soon. I want to say Happy India Republic Day to everyone. Also want to remind everyone that the budget poll for fiscal year 2026 is out. Each year, the town works towards a balanced budget, recognizing there are competing priorities and limited funding. Your input plays a crucial role in this process, helping staff and town council make informed decisions that reflect your needs and interests. Please take a few minutes to complete this quick budget poll by Friday, February 28th. Your voice matters, it can be found on one of the rotating banner links on our homepage. There's one other thing that I'd like to bring to the council's attention, and this is actually kind of more like a roundtable thing, but the timing is such that we are very proud of being an all-American city in 2021, that application process is going on right now. I was, I listened in on the webinar to introduce it in December, and we've been discussing whether or not, staff has been looking into whether or not it would make sense for us to do it. The deadline is February 27th, so that would be a short runway to make that happen, and it would take some resources to do it. So at this point, I would just be wondering if other council members would like to make any comments about whether or not the sustainability theme, which really is our, in our wheelhouse, would work. My thoughts initially were that maybe we don't have a really great sustainability project that could really lead the way, because you present three projects, one of which has to be the theme, and then two others. I know we have two other really strong ones at least, but for the sustainability theme, I thought that if we pivoted a little bit and came at it through, the business model that we support sustainability is through our Master Sustainability Plan and our Sustainability Task Force. So under that umbrella, we could celebrate all five years of all of our sustainability efforts. And I took a quick look at the application and tried to get what I could from the web and other places. So I think it would be some resources. So my ask of the council members, if they're willing to just sort of share their thoughts, is whether or not to give staff the ability to sort of look at this fresh and then decide whether or not it's worthwhile to try to do it. The application will be due on the 27th of February, awarding of the finalists in March, and then it would be in June that a contingency would go to Denver. Last time, it was all virtual, but this time, I think that we could probably be a finalist and make a strong play in Denver to continue our smart city, our all-American city journey. So that was what I wanted to share. If people want to mention that in their comments, I think that'd be more appropriate than having a discussion about it, because this is not a place for a roundtable. So next person is Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to thank the staff for the hard work that they put into our retreat this weekend. It was another really good effort, I feel, by all of my fellow council members, and I think we all emerged from that retreat with a renewed sense of purpose and unity about our goals for our town. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Garamella. I know we all jumped on the, jumped on this as soon as he proposed it, but I did think that it was a really amazing idea to travel to western North Carolin- that it was a really amazing idea to travel to western North Carolina this year and support the towns that have just been decimated by, and the region that's just been decimated by the recent storms. Finally, I... No, I think that was it. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the staff. I know you guys went above and beyond, put a lot of hard work into making last, the past weekend happen, and then having to spend the entire weekend with us. But I want to say I truly enjoy being able to spend time with you guys in an environment that is less formal and more, you know, where we're able to talk about things and get to know each other better. So thank you. As far as the mayor's comments, as much as I would love to go for the All-American City for sustainability, and compared to other even towns in North Carolina, I don't think we would be competitive, you know, and then also considering all the cities and towns across the U.S., I just don't think, unfortunately, it would be worth to put time into that endeavor. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I would need just a little bit more information about what you sent in an email so I could evaluate it. I'm open to it, but I just need to relook at it. Would be concerned about how viable we are, but I think it's always good to try new things. I wanted to, first of all, wish everyone a happy Chinese New Year. And it really was great that we were able to support western North Carolina, so it was great to go see Blowing Rock. Just a couple of comments. I did attend a lot of MLK events last week, and I still hope that we in Morrisville could have one. I think that's definitely missing, and maybe that's something that we can talk about this year, get a roundtable, just in terms of adding that, of something that we can do with the Tri, not with the Triangle MLK Committee, but there's also an Apex Holly Spring Committee, and I think it'd be nice to get us working together with them. For those in the tech industry, there's a really great event on February 5th called State of the Region by Riot. During our retreat, we did talk about economic development, and I think it's important for us to learn how we can engage our tech startups to solve problems for towns and cities with smart cities. And the final thing is, I just want the public to know that, you know, we did not implement a solid waste fee this year. I'm willing to explore options in the future, but we do balance what we hear in the community, the economic impacts of things when we make decisions, and we'll continue to do what we can to grow our town, but it is going to take dollars and revenues to do that. And so I think, looking forward to budget season and how we discuss that, but it was a really great retreat, and that's all I have for now.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretend-Garamella.
Thank you. I would just like to also shout out to staff that I really do appreciate all the work. And we were able to enjoy a little bit of western North Carolina as well as support our neighbors to the west. I think that the retreat gives each of us an opportunity to have more in-depth conversations that not only are the material that's prepared, but also to kind of innovate and share ideas in a way that we can build upon them. And we have work sessions at our dais, but in a different environment, it sparks a little bit more innovation. I know we're going to do an after-action review later in the meeting, so I'll reserve some of my comments for that, but I really did appreciate the opportunity to kind of dig in and look at some issues a little bit differently. And finally, to the mayor's request about the All-American City, I'm a little hesitant to dedicate resources when we don't really have a project that we want to showcase. It's a highly competitive field. I agree with Councilmember Fender. We have a great program with sustainability. We are producing very high-quality products, but they're not, I think, as competitive as we'd want them to be at this time. It doesn't mean forever. We have a lot of good things happening in the future, but staff has been aware over the last several months of this category of sustainability and also of the question about whether or not we should apply again for All-American City. And between looking at the categories and the fact that there will be travel and there is a lot of preparation, it is not just looking into the application, but there is a significant amount of resource, time, and money associated with that. And without a capstone project that we know that is really compelling, I don't think the, it's right for us at this time. Maybe in the future, there's another opportunity for another category, and we can look at that. I'm not saying that we should never look at the All-American City again, but I just do not see the situation working for us at this time. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend-Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Again, like everyone has said, we really enjoyed the retreat, and I was telling some of my fellow council members, usually I walk 10,000 to 15,000 steps, but that day it was only 1,545. That showed that we were grounded, too, you know? Yeah. So, and obviously, a lot of things comes out of it. You know, retreat is just a precursor of what has to come through the budget to go. And with that thing in my mind, mayor's request, 28th is too early. You know, it's barely four weeks, and the amount of time and energy that has to go into it, even if we had a good project, you know, it is still harder to get that stuff done. And moreover, you know, we are still at All-American City, but I don't want to lose the opportunity, I don't want to even have an opportunity go into waste if we apply and we don't get selected. So we are on the top right now, so when we apply, we apply good and get it again. So that's what I'm thinking.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I was actually going to say no comments, but because everyone's thanking staff, I thought we'd talk about that a little later tonight, but at this time, I will also thank you. I'll thank our staff, thank my fellow council members for taking the time to be away from family and friends and home and all the other obligations and opportunities we have in our life. So thank you all very much for the time, and it was definitely time well spent, so I appreciate that. And I'll talk some more about that when we get to this topic.
Okay. So we are scheduled for a 10-minute break. Will that be sufficient for everybody? Reconvene down at the table at 8:51, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Town manager, any comments, sir?
I'll address the retreat when we get to the table, if that's okay.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay. Please reconvene down at the table at 8:51. Bring your little blue things.
We're going to come back into session. We have two work sessions this evening. We invite Planning Manager Brittany Johnson to the table to facilitate discussion on the pilot public art program. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure for you all again to discuss our public art program. So without delay, I'll go ahead and jump straight into the presentation. To provide a little black ground, the mural program is again one component of the Morrisville Public Art Program. Therefore, you know, again, the mural program was envisioned as a first pilot step for our public art initiative. Tonight, staff will focus on the proposed steps for the second phase of that pilot public art initiative. A little on process and timing. So staff was before you in October, on the 24th, we provided a brief and had discussions concerning overview of the program, mural location selections, discussing themes and cost and budget. Staff also during that meeting received feedback concerning the following, addressing the frequency and schedule of installation of future murals, looking at maintenance, exploration, general appreciation. We also discussed addressing the proximity of existing and proposed murals and investigating other forms of public art. Tonight, it is staff's hope that we will provide an overview of some of staff's concerns and recommendations as well as our proposed public art initiatives. Again, on October 24th, staff received feedback from town council concerning, again, proximity of existing and proposed murals and the frequency of installation. After additional staff collaboration, it was concluded that with these concerns, while these concerns were raised by council, it would be best that these concerns are addressed with a forthcoming public art plan. Therefore, a part of staff's recommendation for tonight, staff does suggest the following, to forego the installation of additional murals until calendar year 26. That would allow us to establish a public art plan, also look into pursuing the Morrisville Parkway installation location we discussed at the last meeting, and also investigating the NCDOT Highway 54 underpass. And it's our hope as well that we would initialize some temporary public art initiatives. This presentation will outline some of those proposed options. So the importance of the public art plan, the public art plan would really be our guiding document for all public art endeavors. The plan would define the following, first, we would establish and solidify our mission and the mission of the public art program. We would find the goals and objectives of this program, solidify our approval process, define our implementation guidelines, and also look at some of our technical feasibility. That includes budget, maintenance needs, durability, and anticipated lifespans of all works. We would again assess the safety hazards and potential for vandalism. We would look at artistic quality, look at, again, those adjacency of sites and the proximity of installation. We would overall look at the context of the town's total collection of all public art initiatives, and also set professional credentials for artists and look at our connection, collection diversity. So that being all of the types of public art that we want to see throughout town. So looking at our public art plan and temporary initiatives, why should we pursue these temporary initiatives prior to instituting the public art plan? Really, the temporary initiatives would allow us to continue to cultivate and grow our placemaking efforts while establishing this plan. This would allow us to, one, that these temporary initiatives can be retrofitted and altered in the future to better align with the future plan, and the proposed initiatives are smaller in scale in these locations, insulation can be altered easily. So that really does differ from those more, more permanent types of initiatives. So looking at some of the proposed temporary public art initiatives, all of these initiatives again would be temporary. We're looking at, I have three here for you tonight. One would be icons, that's our prefabricated, paintable fiberglass animals and sculptures. We also have our Town of Morrisville Art Exhibit, so it would be essentially an art show that we would promote. And then third would be movable murals, and these would be on a temporary basis. So a little bit more, we'll jump into icons first. These are a couple of examples of these prefabricated, paintable fiberglass animals and sculptures. I have a few additional examples for you here, so you can see they do vary in height and width. So you see these here are a little bit more wide than they are tall. So when looking at these icons, again, these, this would be a unique sculpture that represents Morrisville. It would typically range in between forty-eight to fifty-three inches in height or in width, and it'd be about forty to fifty pounds as well. You'll see in this example where things can be affixed to it as well, so it's not only just painting, but it can be affixed to, to the sculpture itself. So where would we envision these? These sculptures could be placed along greenways and public gathering spaces. It would be the thought of staff that we would first start with about four to five and see how they are received. These locations can, can be altered and really kind of roll this initiative out fairly slowly. Again, this would take public engagement. We would be required to identify the shape of our sculpture, what will represent Morrisville. This shape would be created, and then again, a local artist would be able to paint or design these sculptures prior to the installation of the art piece. So who, local artists would compete to be selected for a design submission? There are multiple benefits to, to artists to be, to participate in this endeavor. First, we would look at a stipend paid to the artist that would participate. Secondly, artist recognition, they would be able to sign this piece. It would be prominently placed on, on the base, so that's recognition for them, as well as mentioned in any sort of press releases or promotional materials for the project. The, we would also display the artist's name again, artwork title, and photos could be placed on the town's website and on our social media as well. So a little on cost for this particular option. The initial unique mold or cast could be between eight to twelve thousand dollars. This is an estimate depending on the final design. Again, that would be subject to what size we go for, as well as the detail of that design. Each icon after that could range between five and two thousand, and that's depending on the size, the quantity in which we order, and the surface area. This particular option would provide opportunities for sponsorship, so that could be from our local business community, different initiatives in town or individuals. A little on the benefits of this particular option. You can have things like scavenger hunts that would increase tourism. They can be very interactive. They do increase our public art presence again, against much our sponsorship opportunities, public engagement. We would be supporting our local artist community, and also we would be engaging in promoting local businesses and owners. HOAs and schools could adopt one of these, or, or different housing communities. And again, the duration for, for installation and how long they are in that location is quite flexible. So moving on to the second proposed temporary initiative, that would be the Town of Morrisville Art Exhibit, and so again, that would be an art show. The town could invite artists to submit works on a four-month rotation to display in hallways and in lobby areas of Town Hall and other town buildings. The objectives of this program would be to promote awareness for local artists, to encourage interaction with our artist community, and to foster community pride. Who would be taking place or taking advantage of this, that would be, we would be targeting our local artists. That's who our target audience would be. A little more on the art program. So the cost associated with this, it really would be to hanging and displaying the artwork. We would likely have some sort of reception where we could engage students or, or other community members to come in, take a chance to kind of take all of the art in, and, and that would be the kind of culmination of each of the cycles. Moving to our third and final temporary initiative, that would be temporary murals. These temporary murals would be on canvas or art board. You'll see some examples here. So these movable murals, we would envision these to be placed along greenways or in public parks. The objectives of the program would be again to promote our artist community, engage in, you know, interacting with our artist community and fostering community pride. We would be again, working with local artists and wanting them to apply for this. And the cost associated with this would likely be just the, the fabrication of the display and installation, and that could be something that we look into further as this initiative is selected, to figure out if that's something that this town would want to do, if we're going to engage our artist community for fabricating that as well. So a little on our next steps. I know I've gone over a lot of information here, but should you all select a temporary public art initiative and that be selected, our next step would be further research to complete, it would be completed on the proposed programs and process. We will look at, again, public engagement, artist selection and approval process, and also sizing and quantity of any of the proposed initiatives. Also, we would be looking at an in-depth study into budget and cost analysis would need to be completed for any of the options as well. A little on artist selection. With these temporary initiatives, we do foresee these all being a part of an application process that will be designed and administered, administered maybe by staff. The final selection could be evaluated by residents. That could be something online or some other public engagement initiative. Also finalists could be reviewed by staff or one of our, our boards and commissions. And also, final selection will likely be made by this body if that is what you all choose. Again, that these, the process would differ depending on each of the proposed initiatives. So going into what it is that staff does recommend for this, you know, looking and, and discussing internally with staff, we feel that the icon proposal or initiative would likely at this time be the one that is suggested by staff. The reason for this is the overall potential for placemaking and impact, the overall versatility of these icons and where do we place, and the potential for community engagement. It really would be a nice, exciting process to see what will represent Morrisville. I think that is very much something that is pivotal to placemaking. So a few questions to prompt you all with tonight. One, how do you feel about the recommendation to forego the installation of murals until calendar year 26? And how do you all feel about the proposed temporary public art initiatives that I've reviewed?
Just taking the questions in order, I'm not sure that I really understand why we would need to forego further mural installations. I mean, you know, we did some in '24. They were very successful and well-received. I think a natural follow-up to the program would be to do at least one in '25, and then, you know, just, I mean, maybe one a year. But on to question two. I am super happy with the ideas that you have for the backup initiatives, and I have to tell you that I, I, for me personally, the icons eclipse them all. You know, I would love to see us do something like maybe a B or A. I mean, really, I'm so partial to the turtles. Like, I can't really get, I don't know why it would represent Morrisville, but I really did love them in the presentation, and just, I was in Berlin after the Winter Olympics in Berlin, and the bears are still all over the city, and they're, I mean, they're huge, they're a huge draw. They sell them in every single gift shop. They, people take pictures with them, like, you can't pass one that somebody's not doing something interactive with it. And I think that, I mean, I just think that that's a great idea for a program. You know, I, as far as like, you know, local artists painting them, I mean, that's not, I think frankly, the high school art clubs would probably do a fabulous job. But, you know, I'll leave all those details to you, but it's great ideas, and I'm happy with how the programs, with your ideas for the expansion of the program. I don't want to wait till '26 for another mural though.
I guess I'll respond to your first comment concerning murals and why the potential delay. I think that, you know, from the first meeting with council, there were a lot of really good comments made about, well, how close do we really want these? We were thinking about potentially the Indian Creek Trailhead, and we have- We were thinking about potentially the Indian Creek Trailhead, and we have that one at Fire Admin, and so we were looking at the proximity of, you know, where and when and how, and how we make those decisions. And a lot of that really is addressed by a public art plan. And, you know, it is incredibly important to make sure, one, that the life expectancy for a mural is considerable. So where and how we put these and place these, it does need to be guided in a way. And I think that we also had a lot of conversation about the expiration of these. We don't want them all to expire around the same point. Maintenance and things will be, will be very important moving forward. And I think that it just became very, very clear to staff through a lot of the conversation that was having, and that's what we, you know, we hope for, that every conversation is more eye-opening. But it's more so that, you know, these concerns really can be addressed in a thoughtful manner in a public art plan. And that's something that we see in every community that has, you know, a robust program, how, when, where, and how. And, yeah, that's just the kind of thing.
And I definitely do understand that, but I just hate to see us losing the momentum of the mural program when, I mean, you know, we did three murals, and I'm certainly not suggesting we do three murals a year. But I think that if they started, you know, started needing upkeep or needing replacement at the rate of one a year, I think that would be, I think that's a perfectly reasonable cadence. I mean, you know, of course, don't go, you know, don't write it down in pen yet, you have to see what everybody else thinks, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Potem Garamela.
Yeah, so I'm with Councilmember Robotti. I don't see why we would need to forego a mural installation until calendar year twenty-six. You know, in that conversation we had back in October, it was, there was not a, there was not, we were not all in alignment with our concerns. I would very much want to see us continue to do murals in our town, and I don't see what would be wrong with doing at least one mural this coming year. I know the mural along where we talked, along where we would need position, permission from the NCDOT, that's a stretch. And realistically, it's unrealistic. And so I don't, I don't suggest we even pursue that, but I know we, one option was a mural on the picnic area bathroom on the Church Street South Park. So that building, I don't see why we couldn't do a mural there. I don't, I don't understand exactly some of, where some of these concerns are coming from about, like, how can you have too many murals? That's like, what? But, so anyway, well, having three in our whole town is not too many. You know, you go to other towns like Durham, and there's the ones that come to mind, they have murals all over the place, and it's beautiful, and they are attractive, and they attract people, taking pictures and whatever. So anyway, that's where I am. Two, I love the public art initiative and those examples that you showed. I do think that is a lovely idea. You know, we were just there last year, New Bern has all the bears. They have all the bears, yeah. I'm sitting here racking my brain, I don't know what our icon could be for Morrisville. But... Yeah, well, I think you can have too much cricket. Unless we want to have like little crickets, a cricket can be our icon. But anyway, yeah, I think that's a great program, and I would definitely like to pursue that as well.
Mayor Potem Garamela, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
I think let me start with two. First of all, I really like the initiative of creating a town-wide, you know, soliciting for arts. And I think we should, if we can take a step back and use this as a platform, because there are a lot of artists, you know, the whole idea is to promote art, and murals is a part, you know, like, is a subset of the overall art program kind of a thing. It would be nice if we can do a step before even getting into that phase, like based on the kind of themes that you give. You know, you can have, okay, this is the theme, this is what we are looking for, and let people submit there, and let them have it displayed either at historic church or in our corridor, you know, you guys pick the best fifteen, twenty of them, and then let people start thinking about it, and obviously you have Parks and Recs, and you guys are doing a good job, or online polling. I think that, that way what happens, you can have categories too. You know, it's not all the time, like, you know, high schoolers are pretty creative, you know, but not like a kindergarten or those kind of thing, but at least if we has to go somewhere to a level that we had to project. And then that can take a shape. For me, that, so, that is number one. And number two is icons are amazing, and I think it'll go a long way. And last time, I think just before the meeting, our meeting, I was at, I think UNC, so they have all these, and there the artists come and display it, and there's a cost that you can buy out of it. It's not a whole lot expensive, fifteen, twenty is the max that I've seen, but they're still good stuff. So I think, but the more important thing is, we should have, along with the staff, an online polling as to where the locations around the whole, you know, town are, because, and also where potentially the murals can go too, because you just don't want to have two, a mural and this one close by. So that's the reason I want to hold on the mural, once we get the locations planned out, and I think then it's a good time for it to start moving, because a greenway might be a very good place, you know, for a mural, and then we have, no, I mean, it's a free icon, and then very close, you know, we were talking about underneath the craftery, that one. So that's the reason I feel, first, if we can establish the locations, either a good for mural or good for this one. Mural, the first thing that came to my mind was the walkway across, you know, we have the sidewalk around the BMP stone, or something inside the BMP, like, you know, the area just, it basically changes the whole atmosphere of it. So that's where, and the themes is everything. Every year you can have a theme, and we just heard about Veterans Memorial, that could be a theme, that you could, you know, have it not installed, but around it, something like that. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
So a couple of comments, and then I'll answer your questions, Brittany. The public art plan, a hundred percent in support of that. That's fabulous. So thank you for bringing that up. This idea of the public engagement through this process, perfect. Thank you for doing that too. I think you can, I think we'll get some really good input from the public on that, so I like that a lot. So the icons I love too, and I'm trying to think of a, you know, a shape or a whatever. I gotta think about it some more, I'm not, I'm not feeling well like everybody else, so I need to, when I'm feeling better, I'll think about that some more, but the public will help us with that too, for sure. And I love that idea. Remind me though, the, you said the icons would be temporary, so are you thinking that you'll move them, remove them when we're done?
Yeah, so they, they can be placed for any length of time. So again, we can look at various locations. We were thinking starting about with about four or five, and rolling them out fairly slowly, they could stay as long as we want or as short as we would like as well. And we haven't really thought about the total duration, but that's something that we would likely, when we design this process, figure that part out.
Okay, because I asked that because, and that's fine, that's fine. I asked that because you said something about a scavenger hunt, and I thought, are you thinking about moving it so people can go find it again? I like that idea, but I don't know, that might be too heavy to pick up and move them around the lot, so anyhow, I love that idea. The art show, love that too, I think that's fabulous. There, yeah, if we can engage the high school kids in the art programs, that's fabulous. And then I love the idea of having temporary murals, because you could then place them in areas where we would probably never have a mural. So going back to Mayor Potem Garamela's, you know, think about the location first and where things go, I think, you know, we're not going to be able to put a mural or an icon just everywhere in town, so maybe these temporary murals can fit somewhere. And so are you going to have a topic or a theme related around them too?
That's something that will, you know, if that is selected as one of the initiatives, that's something that we'll kind of go forward and kind of engage from there, and determine if a theme is something we want. Because even temporary in nature, it could be one theme, it could be based on location where we would like it to be placed, so that does open, open it up for, in various ways.
Okay, okay, so obviously I've talked all about question two, yes, I love this whole I love this whole idea of, you know, temporary art around town, and then I would prefer that quite frankly, over doing the murals. So I'm good with putting a pause, you know, number one, waiting a bit. I think, I think what you've proposed here gives us the ability to share art in places, again, that may not be good for a mural, and would then open up even more places for public engagement. You know, not everybody is going to go to Shiloh Park, to the playground in the back, and have the opportunity to see that mural, but they might walk on the greenway at Indian, at the Indian Trailhead, and they'll be exposed then to some other form of art. So, so I'm, you know, I'm good with foregoing, you know, in number one, and I'm good with what you propose, so, thank you. Sorry, do you have something, Michelle? But you need a mic. No, that's all right, I was like, I thought maybe something was going on behind me.
I just wanted to clarify, Brittany's only going to be able to undertake one of the temporary public art initiatives forward this year. We do not have the capacity to do all three of them. I think they're all great ideas, but we're really looking for what your preference is of the three.
Oh, thank you for that clarity, thank you, thank you. Okay, then I go with the icons. Is that what you want? Does that help? Icons.
Michelle, sorry, before you get to, may I, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
So from a budget standpoint, Michelle or Brittany, we have, I think, thirty thousand dollars budgeted. Is that sufficient to do a mural and to kick off icons if that's the choice of council?
The budget would be tight, and I'm not sure, especially it would depend on where the mural would be placed, how large it would be. I do think that it may be an opportunity to do one or the other.
I'm still in with the icons.
Anything else, Town Manager?
So you may need to circle back to everybody else, they didn't have the opportunity to answer that last question.
One of, which of the three? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you. Great presentation, I love the fresh perspective of different types of art that we could be considering. I was one of those individuals that wanted to pause the murals, because it's not that I don't like murals, I love the murals that we have, it's that the public and people are kind of fickle sometimes. They want new and fresh and exciting, and if we have too many murals that are released together, like within a few years, that new and fresh and exciting will wane over time. I think that mixing it up with what you've proposed with the icons makes it new and fresh and exciting, and we can go back and introduce murals as well. But most importantly, I think we need to take a step back like Mayor Potem said, and what is our plan? What is our, what, where are all the mural locations? What are the potential specs? And we have that in a plan, and we might, that might be a ten-year mural plan as part of the overall artwork, and because it seems like we're looking for spots, we might put a mural, we're looking for spots, let's just look and say, okay, these are mural, these are temporary locations for icons. This, these are potential kind of things for temporary art. I think about the success of the recycling program that we have at the elementary schools, where we have the flags on the light poles, and we have the winners. That is so exciting for me to see that winner's banner every year. It's fresh, it's new, it's innovative, there's a different theme each year that they have to compete with. So I can see the program for art with the icons or with the, you know, the art challenge to our students and so forth, just to kind of mix it up each year, make it exciting, because that's really what I think we have an opportunity to do, is tap into this wealth of experience and innovation. But if we maximize all of our mural space in year three, then we're kind of losing some of that excitement and limiting ourselves to other things, so that's why. So icon, I like the B, because of, you know, I think about the fire station and how we want to kind of expand that and highlight it and showcase it. I'm open to other things too, but I really would like to see some thought going into themes each year, and then how we can rotate that theme throughout the year. It builds excitement. Thank you.
Councilmember Rau, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm in favor of the icons. I'm still, I like the mural, I mean, I guess, I'm fine with waiting until twenty-six, but I really wanted to see if we can do a mural sooner than that. The other thing is, I just would like to know, whenever we do the mural, how we're going to get public input on the type of design, and then also input from council. Mayor Potem Garamela mentioned about, you know, veterans, I've had ideas of, on the Morrisville Parkway, I run by there so much, and I see that, just that wall on the Parkway, the grade separation, and I thought about having, you know, could we have, excuse me, could we have, you know, like, veterans, first responders, I mean, something honoring people that fight for our freedom, died for our freedom, I think that would be a really cool thing to do, so, and just, how do we get input from the public as well? I would like to see that across the board as we develop our program, is, you know, you know, the mayor and I were talking about during the retreat, I mean, you know, starting with having, you know, art displayed at the farmer's market, having, you know, artists come in, just like Gary has a arts festival every year, that'd be nice for Morrisville to have that. So I think these are things I think we need to think about to, you know, leverage our brand of innovation.
And you said icons were your choice?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think I'm starting to get sick.
Okay, so I'll go, and then we'll go around to make sure that staff gets what they need.
I believe that this is a big case of the yes and, I hear everyone talking about excitement, about something new and different. We could do a theme for these two murals that we already agreed to go forward on with consensus and have some kind of theme associated with them. I am not fearful that they would be too close to the other things, we have nothing in Morrisville Community Park now, and the Southern Lot could really use a little bit more color there, there's going to be a lot of people going through both those parks, so I think it's important to keep the mural program going. If you guys need a few extra thousand dollars, don't be limited by thirty thousand dollars. This is one thing. And the three murals that we've already done, they have changed kind of, they've created three new iconic places in town. We were doing the tour with the consultants about the cricket fields who own or to Shiloh. And it was just great to see a restroom building that was plain cinder block popping. It was a really nice add addition there, um, with a new playground, new basketball court. I mean, murals around, they bring color, they bring life, they make things more interesting. So I definitely think that we should go forward with the two that we already decided to go forward with on consensus. There are a limited number of places that we can do this in town. Staff has already looked and brought forward a lot of different ideas of where they could be. So I think that work's already been done. One of your earlier things about the public art plan, we did all of those things for the mural program. We essentially have a public art program that we just haven't approved as a policy. I mean, you've already done all the work. Um, we've already gone through the process. I like, I'm not gonna put you in the spot that you have to respond to that. Maybe I'm being too simplistic and for that I apologize. I know there's a lot more work behind the scenes that get things done. The proposed temporary public art initiatives, I'm sorry that you don't have the bandwidth to do all three, cause I think they would be great. I think the idea of having murals and different things all over town would be really nice per Councilmember Johnson's point. Um, but I'd go with the icons first. My first concern would be only forty or fifty pounds, that's a suitcase. How do we make sure they don't walk away? I mean, that would be the scavenger hunt. How many of these can you get, take? But, and I don't wanna sort of, um, muddy the waters, but I have some ideas about what the icons could be. Um, and I don't think you're looking for that now, right? That's just something that'll be...
Always a good opportunity here.
Okay, um, so Morris, our new guy that's gonna be our agent online at the website, that would be a nice way to bring all these things together. And that would be a cute little thing. I think just an M would be neat also, but I think they'd be easy to push over. So that's the thing, they'd have to be stable. So that's what I worry about. And I'm not sure how colorfully and interesting you can do an M. So that would be my concern about that. Talking about the temporary murals, I'd really like to bring up again the idea of having a story walk. Cause if we're willing to put those kind of poles all over town, if we can identify a place where we could do like twenty of those poles, we can encourage reading. Which I think is something that we talked about, but not for a few years. But a story walk would be something that I'm sure Wake County, um, public libraries would be interested in helping us support and keep that curated. So I, that would be an initial outlay and that, that would be a separate thing. I don't wanna take money out of what we're doing. So that was a little bit of an aside. But those are the things I wanted to share that I think it's important to keep going, what we've already decided. And the way we did it last time with the Parks and Rec Cultural Resource Committee was really good. But if you wanna have another layer before that with some public input or something, I definitely support that. Cause whenever we engage the public, I think that's a very positive thing. So if we wanna just circle back about icons or public art or portable murals, um, that would be great. And that, we might be able to get someone else to help curate the public art exhibit, possibly if you don't have the bandwidth to that. So that's just a thought. Uh, Councilmember Rabadi, did you say icons at the beginning would be your choice of those three if we could only choose one? Okay, that's what I thought. Councilmember Fender?
Yes, a mural, a mural and an icon. I'm just...
Well, I think they captured the mural yes early. Um, Councilmember Garamella, was it icons for you? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Again, I apologize. If you could ask both mural and icon, cause I think we have a head count of three yes, three no and one I'm not sure on mural. So we'd like to be sure we have clarity moving forward from this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, starting from the beginning. Um, mural. Mural.
Well, at least if we're gonna talk about that, I don't understand, I don't know where these, who these fickle people are in Morrisville and why we're concerned, so concerned about fickle people. I get the feeling that one or two people have been bending the ear of some of the other council members. I'm definitely in favor of having another mural in our town and an icon.
And the icon. Okay. Icons. Uh, Mayor Portem-Geramella?
Icons.
Okay.
And, and mural, you know, if both can, see the question is not about mural or icon to me. It is both are combined as a program. And you can one year do one, one other year you can do something so that, you know, and find good locations. That's pretty much, uh, what I'm looking for. It's like, I'm not saying, okay, I would like icon to start with, if that's what the, it is, and then mural.
So node, node mural this year, to be clear.
Yeah, I wanted to, you know, obviously.
Give your mic on.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, um, I'll go with icon.
And node mural?
For this year, if that is the only option, I would say.
It's yes or no is the option.
I want to know the...
Well, I mean, we have to circle back, I think. But again, the guidance coming out of there, there is a possibility we could do icon and mural. I've heard you say that if we need the funding, but it's also a resource issue in terms of Brittany's capacity to do that work. Uh, we're still carrying a vacancy in the planning, well, still carrying two vacancies in the planning department. So it also becomes a, what can we prioritize? But I think what we need coming out of this meeting is if we could do it, do you want icons and a mural?
Okay.
And, and if a priority is one, then icon is number one.
And I would add, even if it is both, I would say we're talking about calendar year. Brittany's gonna need to focus on one, wrap that up and then transition to the other.
So you're saying that?
We can't run both simultaneously. We could potentially do two in a calendar year, but, um, not two simultaneously.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
So, I'm gonna repeat what I said before. I, I, I want the icons, I forego the mural, I don't wanna see the mural right now. I'm afraid if you try to do both, you're gonna jeopardize the icon initiative. Cause if I, um, I, I didn't go back quick enough here, Brittany, but I think you said you could only afford to do like four icons? How many did you say? Four or five?
Uh, that's where we would like to start. Uh, when it comes down to cost, it will depend on what our shape is. Um, and, and that will be between eight and twelve thousand. And then, um, from there, it'll depend on how much they are per unit, based on how many we order and things of that nature. So, um, that will be something that we'll have to, uh, get those numbers a little bit more, more financed.
That's fair, that's fair. And so I guess that goes back to my comment then, if you're gonna roll out an icon program, let's really roll it out. Not just have one or two. You need to have a, a few to kind of make a splash about this investment in public art. And so that's why I would tell you to concentrate on icons. Let's do that, let's do it right and engage the public. I think that's, I think we have great opportunity there. And then, um, and then forego the mural, um, till, till next year.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
So I'm most concerned about your time of being successful. Sometimes when you split among two really, um, high-profile things, it just both don't rise to the level that you want. You did a fantastic job with the murals, but you spent a lot of time working with the application process and the Park and Recs Committee and the Town Council and the artists. I mean, that is a lot of your effort. And I know that you do more than just the art program, cause we have seen how hard you worked with Park West. So, and I know there's more good things coming too, Michelle. So, um, I want this to be a success. And you have an established framework for the murals, but you do not have established framework for the icons. The icons are very innovative and something that we didn't really have on our radar until, you know, just very recently. And there needs to be probably three icons in order to make a program. Not one, not two, but three or four. And that's gonna take some time and planning and recruitment and public feedback. And, um, I would really focus in on the icons. I think you can do the murals successfully, cause you have some work, but I, I'd like to see that in another year. I really want the icon to pop and for us to get that program right so that we can repeat it in the future. Thank you.
If I could just follow up on one thing you said, like two or three icons, different icons or?
That's part of the, the wonderful challenge. Like, do we have three different types of Bs? Or do we have three different types of, uh, different kinds of, exactly. Like, I don't know. I'm not gonna make that decision because we have a whole public input kind of, um, thing. We have our Park and Recs Committee that wants to weigh in, so I'm not gonna limit it. But I do think that we need three separate entities to make a program. I, I love how we did things in threes with the mural. We should think about threes for the icons.
Councilmember Row, please.
I'm for both, icon and mural, understanding that, you know, he looks at the resources and that we can't do all at once, but I like both.
I agree. I, I like both. So I'd love to be able to move forward with everything. Big yes and. Does that give you what you need?
Yeah, I think, um, just a, a little response. Um, you know, if we, if we do decide to move forward with icons and then also, um, do a mural, I think it should be, one, I think that capacity-wise, um, to, to focus on having two mural locations and something else would be a little difficult at this time. Not only in budget, but just, just capacity and making sure again that we, um, are able to roll this out in an effective manner. Um, so that would be the concern there. Um, I do want to, I, I know that the last culmination of the last meeting, there were two locations that we discussed, um, in depth. Um, when looking at Church Street, I will say that we had, um, continued staff discussions after the last meeting. And, um, the engineering department weighed in as well. And again, engineering isn't represented on our, um, mural committee. Um, but they did have some concerns about, you know, just the plan improvements at Church Street and maybe having some of that more solidified prior to having something installed in that location. Um, looking at the material for that building, um, it, it was brought to our attention that, you know, we did pay in, uh, additional costs for that material, for that structure. And wanting to, you know, really give that, um, structure time and life to breathe and, and, um, and understanding that, you know, that was an additional cost for that. Um, so if we, for the mural location, I think that if we want to move forward with one of them, um, I think that we would need to discuss more internally with staff to make sure that, um, that the location, um, either if we do Morrisville Community Park, which is the other one that was selected, um, or if there is another viable, um, location, um, I would want to go back to our committee to make sure they are in line with that. Because, um, moving out of our last discussion, uh, we were really looking for, um, possibly if you all were to, um, support the temporary initiative in lieu of the murals. But if we move forward with that, I wanna make sure that everyone has a seat table. I'm here representing that committee, but I am not the whole total of that committee.
Understood.
So I'm not sure why Morrisville Community Park just has chosen, approved. That could be the one we go forward with rather than delaying the whole process. I understand the, you wanting to let people enjoy the new, the nice material, but it's not that the material can't be painted on, right?
That was for Church Street.
That, yeah, that's Church Street. So it sounds like we'd be sufficient, we'd be okay with one.
She says she just needs to go back to the other groups.
Right.
And just run it by everyone again. Possibly look, looking at the, the building at Morrisville Community Park. But she needs to run that by the others.
Well, we aren't... By engineering or the Parks and Rec Committee or what? I thought engineering, so already okay with that one.
I think we're getting into the weeds now, you know?
Okay, we're getting a little bit in the weeds.
If I could, um, that what I think we've heard is that there is support for moving forward with icons, that that would be the first priority. And that... Yes, sir.
You got that as a priority from three.
I'm sorry.
You got that as a priority for three people. Other people were, do both.
I, if, if I can finish.
Okay.
Not here. We have a major, we have uni- uni- unanimous support for icons to move forward as the first priority versus another mural. We also have direction from a majority to come back and consider a mural in the coming year. So Brittany will leave here to focus on beginning to work towards the icon program. There is work to be done there. There's community engagement to be done there. And in the meantime, we can have the internal conversations that are necessary to be able to come back to you about a mural location.
Everyone okay with that? Thumbs up?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you for bringing that one home for us, Town Manager. Is there anything else you need from us?
No, that's all. Thank you all very much.
Thank you both very much. Yeah, really good. Okay, our second work session, or last work session this evening, is a debrief of the Town Council winter retreat. We invite Town Manager Zudema to join us at the table to facilitate the discussion. I has his comments, uh, so he'd be able to leave. But the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. So the, the purpose of this work session was really to just to hold a space for, if there's really anything we needed sort of a short-term follow-up on. And then if we have time, I was just gonna do a quick summary of the highlights of what came out of the retreat for the public, so we're being transparent. Um, but the first thing I'd like to start with, um, can you get me to slide? Thirty-seven, please.
Yes.
So you recall, we had a conversation, um, with Michelle and Tiffany in regards to the BAC. And Michelle presented a total of nine other potential amendments. And so we started that conversation but not finished it. So what we're, what we're looking to do is to see if there is consensus around any or all of these nine so that Michelle knows whether to continue that work or not. I think we've heard a couple of people, um, the mayor and, uh, Councilmember Rabadi, um, Councilmember Rabadi during the meeting. I think also the mayor during the meeting, um, spoke to not supporting number three. Um, and then the mayor had a couple others. I don't have my notes in front of me for the other numbers. Um, and I don't know that we had a chance to directly hear from other council members. So I think our first priority tonight for Michelle is to talk about these nine and understand if, A, there's support for it or B, if there's not. Do you have questions or is it just something you don't think you wanna do?
And I'll note, I invited Brittany up. Um, a lot of these potential additional amendments, a lot of these ideas came from her. So, um, we have the benefit of her being here with us tonight. She'll also be the one drafting the amendments and working on the project moving forward. So I wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to have her, um, as part of this conversation as well. But we really breezed through this. So again, um, any questions you have, I'll just start there.
Yeah, I have a question about the first one. Prohibit from fronting on a major or minor thoroughfare. Prohibit what from fronting?
Um, that would be, um, we're talking about adding light manufacturing as a permitted use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so not allowing that building to be right up against the street. Again, we have a minimum build two. You have to be between, I think, twenty, forty feet from the road. Um, and, um, that's so you're not disrupting and breaking up the streetscape with, um, buildings such as, um, your multifamily, your recreational, your coffee shop, your retail, whatever it is. And then you have a large hundred thousand or two hundred thousand square foot box, basically, um, with light industrial. Also included, you know, as an option, you know, with some enhanced architecture, you know, allowing an, an exception.
Yeah, I, okay, I got it. I just didn't know what specifically you were talking about there. So I'm in favor of all those. So I'm in favor of all those amendments. I thought we already had that requirement for the, for that area anyway. We don't?
The use type would just, uh, have a different kind of architectural language.
Okay. So I'm in favor of all those amendments. Okay.
Um, I think maybe just go one by one and see what questions you have as opposed to going through the whole list again.
No. Oh, so sorry. Sorry.
I just wanted to... I just want to put it on the record that I'm okay with all of the proposed, um, adjustments. And I just want to see if we can get through this so that Satish can weigh in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also good. And it's what, what, don't let out, forget this.
I'm fine with him as well. Sorry. I'm reading through him again.
I'm sorry, did you say you were good with all of them or were we just talking about number one?
No, I, I don't recall what the last four were.
Okay. Let's, let's start with these five then, and then maybe we move to the next slide. If you, do you have any questions about these?
No, I'm good with all of those.
All right. Councilmember Rabadi, you had, I think, an issue with number three.
Yes, I'm not in support of number three, um, allowing additional flexibility for buildings close to the street. We're specifically talking about light industrial. I think what we currently have is fine. I don't need them any closer to the street.
Mayor Colley, I think you had a...
I think, um, just number three, to clarify, um, is more related to the street air buffer and the landscaping that would be in front of the building, just providing a little bit more flexibility, given how close some of those buildings are to the road. Um, our street buffer requirements require a certain number of shrubs and, and shade trees and, and other things, um, in front of the building. And, um, I, I think from the staff perspective, um, we're looking at how close some of these buildings are to the road. Um, a little concerned that in a couple areas, you could potentially have trees growing into the buildings. That's not the case everywhere. I think with Spark, the amenity center, and some other things, you'd have no problem meeting your normal requirements. Um, but the suggestion would be just to allow a little bit more flexibility in those areas where, um, it would be a little tight.
Uh, again, I personally am not in favor of that. I, you know, I think that, I think our, our street buffers, the shrubs, the trees, the everything, I think they're small enough as they are. I don't think we need to, I mean, I, I don't think that we need to make any amendments there.
So Michelle, I'm, I was okay with that, but maybe I need to clarify, I was okay with this one about allowing flexibility. But remind me, I thought you said at the retreat that you weren't relaxing the requirement, it's just building in flexibility.
The idea would be to look at options where maybe you could do a understore tree that doesn't grow as large, or maybe you're relocating the shade tree somewhere else, but not to reduce the overall number.
Right. Okay, good. That's why, then I'm in, I'm in favor.
Yeah, I mean, we have different options for each of our buffer types. So people can select, um, you know, ten, twenty-foot buffer. Um, I think the other thing for the Go District specifically is that we do require one hundred and fifty percent of that required buffer. So I think that there's a little bit more conflict there because you're, you're asking for additional plantings, um, in that area already.
The point about three, I just don't see why we need to relax anything just so that they can build closer to the street. I'd rather they be a little bit further back from the street anyway. So I'd like to keep our full buffers and have as many trees as possible in there.
And also just flexibility is never going to mean more trees, more, more buffer. It's never going to mean that. It's always going to mean we want to do less, we want to, we want it to be lower, we want it to be closer to the street. It's never going to be in our favor.
And this one, um, is really just six of seven. I will say eight was more a note, but we aren't going to be required to do this by general statute in the new legislation that was adopted. Um, that new legislation prohibits us from making anything non-conforming. So we are going to need to adopt an effective date, um, for, for the amendments. And then, um, nine, unless she wanted to change some of those existing standards, we are just noting that those would allow. So really, it's, it's six of seven on this slide.
On the nine, I have a question is, I understand, um, loading areas oriented away from residential use. But also, it's irritating when you have these, uh, um, forklifts, you know, packing and making noise, so seven in the morning or five thirty in the morning if residential area is around it. I hate to see that kind of thing happen. Because I, I, I know you put a commission for sound at the time, but I thought this was all part of that too. And I would like, uh, be more cognizant of noise, just because we are saying it has to be contained within the box. I would also say like be, uh, mindful of outside.
I would agree with that. Whatever we need to do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you both. So Mayor, unless there are specific topics that council would like to hear, um, again, my, my intent would just do a quick read-through of some highlights for the interest of the public hearing, what was discussed at the retreat. We'll of course post minutes once those are done and approved, and the audio recording would be made available. Um, but I think this is just a good way to hit some really quick high points if you're okay with that. So, um, again, Thursday evening, the twenty-third, we met and talked about sustainability, um, good discussion around the possibility of additional resources and tracking some solar data. No specific decisions or asks came out of that session. The second session that night was parks fees. Uh, we started but did not finish a discussion of senior fees. We'll be coming back to you in a future budget work session to address that. Um, and then you would, you requested some additional information about, uh, resident versus non-resident cost recovery, and also, um, just some additional background on the proposed fee philosophy prior to getting to the budget process for parks. So on Friday, uh, the twenty-fourth, we had one session, uh, regarding council communications and council meeting operations. Uh, we, staff is going to work on the possibility of a draft agenda going out a week sooner than the full agenda goes, again, in the interest of transparency. Um, council also had several discussions and agreed to emphasize communication both inside and outside of council meetings, gave each other permission to hold one another accountable to time during meetings, uh, and agreed to make a best effort to attend meetings. And then council also made clear to staff the need to stay focused on the resident perspective. We then moved into Saturday. Um, our first session that morning was base budget. Um, there was support for broadening the scope of what has been the fire apparatus capital reserve to be more of a public safety reserve, uh, and then continuing to use annual allocations to build reserves so we can continue to do project as pay-as-you-go funding. Uh, and this is when the conversation, circling back to what, uh, Councilmember Rao mentioned, uh, that council is not going to consider adding a solid waste fee for FY twenty twenty-six. And then last item there was asking that our budget calendar be adjusted to tentatively show adoption at the May twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, so we'll come back to you at the next work session with a revised calendar. Uh, we don't want to do adoption and, uh, the public hearing the same night, but we'll get that worked out for y'all. Uh, the next session was council budget priorities, uh, based on a prioritization exercise that was conducted there in the room. There were nine priorities identified. Those included business collaboration, economic resiliency, engagement, inclusivity, quality of life, recognizing successes, safe community, sustainability in environment, and transportation. And we'll certainly talk more about those as we go through the budget process. Uh, in session six, it was about staff budget priorities. Um, and so we talked a little bit about the importance of transparency with project timelines and particularly sharing when there were deadlines that were out of our control so that the public can understand why we're having sometimes some challenges. And then we had a conversation about the, um, combining of the finance and budget departments based on the, uh, earlier retirement of our finance director. And based on that conversation, uh, you gave us direction to come back to you at an upcoming meeting, uh, with an overview of what that combination would look like and some details around a mid-year request for one additional position, an accounting generalist in the new combined department. And we'll have a name for that combined department by the time we come back. Yes, ma'am?
So, um, I, I didn't, I don't remember us giving, um, direction to go forward. And I, I will tell you, I was one that said I wanted to see, I wanted more information. I wanted to see, um, the, how the, I'm, I'm not sure I'm opposed to the combining of the two departments. I think that makes a lot of sense and I have confidence in Byron. But I want to see that, um, org chart, what that looks like. And for me, I'm not there yet. I don't...
No, no.
So I need more information as, and so, so I can, so I'm clear, um, about the new position outside of budget.
Yep. So we're going to bring you that justification, um, at the February eleventh meeting. And then, um, should you be in support of that, we would bring a resolution for that position back the twenty-fifth. Not going to ask for that in one night.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, and then section seven was capital projects. We had a discussion around the current cost estimate for the Public Works facility, and we have some direction to come back to you with any viable options in regards to that project. Um, we also had, uh, a brief conversation about the need to move the fires, the, the existing need to move Fire Station Two from Chapel Hill Road to Paramount Parkway, um, and looking at that again in the context of the cost of the Public Works facility and the overall debt model. Um, and then there was some conversation around some intersection improvements that are on the list, um, but would be held off on for right now. They are scheduled until twenty-six, uh, and that was one at Downing Glen and Town Hall, which is a proposed traffic circle, and the other is a proposed traffic circle in Church at Jeremiah. So not going the way, just not being moved up from where they're currently scheduled. Uh, and then we had a discussion about the Municipal Service District that remains in the Gables neighborhood, and that we were again given direction to come back with options for how that might be accomplished, um, as soon as is, is feasible, given the condition of the roads there and the increasing costs. Uh, and then you participated in a two-year review of the CIP, uh, that included a re-prioritization exercise, and Jeannie is working on sorting through sticky notes. And so we'll be back to you with that prioritization at a future meeting as well. Um, she suggested she could have that for tonight if she didn't sleep, and I told her that maybe she'd be allowed to take a nap after the weekend. Uh, so then we moved to Sunday for our final two sessions. Uh, one was economic development. We had a discussion about the importance of inner-city visits and supporting both Tiffany and potentially, uh, Christie if for some reason the chamber couldn't do that through sponsorships or other means. So we'll be following up with Christie, um, Christie Moser, excuse me, the new chamber president on that. Uh, and then in general, council expressed for support for the direction that Tiffany had displayed with the Economic Development Action Plan, um, and when, where she was headed, picking up from what Kathleen had shared. And then finally, um, the session number nine was on the Go District related to potential UDO amendments. Uh, Michelle presented information on the potential to add a definition of light manufacturing that could be an allowable use in that, uh, Go District, which is generally around the McCrimmon Parkway extension. Uh, and so there was some discussion about that, and she'll continue to work on, uh, the specifics of what that language amendment would be. And then, as you saw this evening, we then circled back on the potential other UDO amendments that were proposed, and so we've got feedback to, to follow up on that. So that is the highlights that, that I took from our week, weekend and weeknight together.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Any further questions? Anything?
Thank you.
Yeah. We all thanked staff for, uh, really set the table really well for us and presented some important info.
I didn't jump in earlier. Um, I do want to thank our amazing staff. Um, you've all said that. I'll say it one more time, there is a amazing amount of work, tremendous amount of work that goes into this. Um, you know, everyone contributed to that, uh, particularly the folks that you saw at the retreat this weekend, um, but also some folks over here the other night. So want to call certainly Kimberly and Jeffrey from Public Works, Mary and her team, uh, from Parks and Rec. Uh, Friday evening was just kind of a discussion with us, and, uh, thank you to Lori for supporting that conversation. Uh, and then on Saturday, obviously, we spent a lot of time with, um, Byron and Jeannie and also with Mark Spanioli from the CIP side, and then on Sunday, Tiffany and Michelle. Um, so really kudos to all those. I would, I would like to particularly call out also Bianca. Um, I thought that, that it couldn't have gone any smoother in terms of bus and food and rooms and training space and everything. So kudos, thank you. Um, that makes my mind let, focus on other things, which I really appreciate. Um, and then, you know, once again, um, Jeannie's a, a little bit of the, the brainchild behind all the organization of, of getting us to the point where we're ready to get on a bus with you. So a lot of, a lot of file organizing and chasing and, and she and Byron created, you know, the majority of the information that you saw on Saturday along with Mark. So thank you to them as well. No, sorry, we're ready for closed session.
Paying personal matters.
Mayor and council, uh, pursuant to one forty-three dot three-one-eight dot eleven-eight-five and, um, eight-six, I move to be going to closed session to discuss, um, a lease and a personnel matter.